Would you like to lead us in the pledge? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open it up for public comments. And if you didn't grab an agenda, I will let you know that right after that, I will run through the discussion of the process of how we're doing this. If anybody would like to make public comments, now is the time. As I said the other day, I'd love for the public comments to be about the topic at hand. So if anybody would like to make public comments, now would be the time. Okay, if there are none, I think we will move on to the next item here, which is a discussion of the process. So following up on what we went through last week and putting all of this together, and for anybody who might not have been here, we, this is more for the audience, I guess, is we had 27 applicants from our community that were willing to volunteer for this position. Those applications all came in by four o'clock on Friday. And Val worked throughout the week to make sure they were all assembled, made sure they all were members of the community and met all of the qualifications. At that time, we all received electronic copies over the weekend that we could look at if we wanted to do an electronic format. And then we met on, my days are running together, it was Tuesday. We met, we had a regular board meeting on Monday. Most of us looked at them over the evenings in advance of that. Then we met on Tuesday in open session to go through the list and figure out who we would like to have further conversations with, because you can only evaluate so much there. We had a rubric that we used as a guideline for consideration, because when you have 27 eager applicants, we had to work through that. So I think we had, in my opinion, a productive session where everybody was able to go through some people they wanted to talk to. These would be a good choice. And then we had discussion and aligned on the nine candidates that we are going to welcome in today. The way we're going to do it today is the first candidate will come in at 4:15, unless I, unless they happen to be here ahead of that and we're ready to roll. We will go through and as we can look at the agenda, we have them in 30-minute increments, so we will be very attuned to the time. We want to give them ample time to answer the questions. It's more for them to talk and us to listen. In that, then we will wrap up and move to each candidate after that. We have a set of questions. Everybody has a binder in front of them, thank you, Val. And in the binder, we have questions that are the same questions that everybody will have the same questions asked of them, and we will all ask the same question each time. So for example, I'll ask the first question. Kristin's going to ask the second, then Mary will ask one. So we will do that. And there's a place for us to take notes in here so that we can remember this for our deliberation at the end. With that, then we'll go through each person. If we need to take a little bathroom break between, we could. I will draw your attention to, at 6:45, we have a set break in there. That's hopefully not to catch up, but also a break so we could actually get a little something to eat. Val has taken orders from us to have some Subway. And she has it set up that we can sit out there in an open area. We won't be talking about this, we will be eating. And we won't, so, and anybody's welcome to sit and watch us eat if they want. So that's, but there's just sandwiches for us. But we have that little time in there so we could have a little snack. And then we will continue with the rest of the candidates. With Jose is our final candidate at nine. With that, then we will have a board deliberation. And the plan for this is, last time, when we went around and said, oh, who would you like to, who are your top five, top three? I started in no particular order, but I started with Maggie and went this way. And today, I'm going to start with Mary and say, okay, who seems to be bubbling up of these people that you think this would be your first choice? And I will go from Mary to Kristin, and we'll go around like that. And we'll, Val will help take notes on that. And then we'll just have our discussion amongst that and determine who we think our candidate is to extend the offer. With that, one thing, Dan, you mentioned last time, is just because we ask them if they want to do it, they might change their mind. So, you know, we would have to work through that a little bit as well. So any questions on the process for me? And then any clarifications that you want to add, Dan?
I would just add, in the room here, the clocks are a little bit slow, maybe one to two minutes slow. So just if anyone's looking to kind of keep track on things. And then also, just you mentioned it, Madam President, but just a reminder that we want to save all, any and all deliberation until we get through all of the candidates. So even though we may have a few moments in between candidates, and certainly during the break, there shouldn't be any discussion of any of the candidates that we've heard thus far. So that's a great practice we want to make sure we follow.
Okay, excellent. All right, any other questions? Yes?
I just want to make sure that I'm clear on pronunciations of everybody's names, because I did notice that we were a little different in pronunciations at the meeting on Tuesday.
Oh.
And I want to make sure that we are doing that properly. For example, you're pronouncing Jose's last name as Raina, but I don't see a tilde, so I'm just not sure.
Any insights into all the, any thoughts? Okay. Yeah, I know, we should, these are the questions as A de Vista parents we should be asking. Yes.
Well, don't, you know, expect an English teacher to ask about the pronunciation.
And I'm always such a first-name person that I'm supposed to probably do the Mr. and Mrs.'s.
Yes, curious about Christopher Michaud is my?
Michaud.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And is it Petros or Petros?
Petros, I believe.
Petros, that's right.
Okay, Petros.
Our first one coming in, is it?
Nadine.
Nadine?
Nadine.
Do you know the last name?
Hamid.
Hamid, okay, thank you. All right, well, that is what I have. Any other questions? Okay, all right, well, with that.
Too efficient for your own good?
I know, well, I kind of figured that's, we would, we would be ahead of time. Okay, so move into, do I need a motion to move into recess? Or can I just put us into recess? Okay, all right, let's, we will go into recess so we can move the podium. All right, we are back in session now out of recess. Good afternoon, please have a seat.
Good afternoon, thank you so much.
All right, I'm glad you are here today. My name is Suzanne Callahan, and we are very happy that you are here today. So while you're getting settled, there's water for you. We, as, we'll try to make this as informally formal as possible with all these people sitting up here, I know. Yes.
You make me nervous.
I know, I know, yes, well, we don't want it to be that way. So just so you know, I went through before, we have a set of questions. We want to learn from you and a little bit more about why you would like to participate as a volunteer on the Board of Education. So we have a series of questions that, everybody's getting the same questions throughout the process. So I will start it off, and then everybody will ask a few, and we'll make sure that there's time for you to ask questions of us as well, okay?
Sounds great, appreciate it.
All right, so I would like, I'll start us off. Could you please start a little bit with your personal background and experience and involvement in the community? And, yeah, tell us a little bit more about what's in your letter of interest.
Sure, so, you know, I've been here since '84. And I was just mentioning that I came to Michigan in Grand Rapids when, you know, East Belt Line was a two-way lane.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, you guys are probably too young to remember that, but that was the only crossway. So, you know, my nephews have always gone to Forest Hills School District, and they've done amazing. I must say that all you guys have done an amazing job. You know, hats off to you guys, because it's definitely success stories. Those guys are billionaires and millionaires coming out of Forest Hills. And I think you should maybe even look at that sometime, you know, and praise these success stories that come out of, you know, Forest Hills. So my kids, of course, I'm very proud of them. They came out of FHE and Knapp Forest, you know, Mr. Hyde School. And again, amazing story, we were extremely welcome. You know, there was no issues. And my kids have been very successful, and they're graduate, graduated and graduating soon. So, you know, now it's amazing school, amazing people, amazing community. What can I do, you know? And this opportunity came up. So I said, hey, I must grab it. I must put myself in the pool, you know, and see what I can do. I think I can do a lot. You know, you always tend to be more aggressive in thinking what you can do. Yeah, and, you know, there's so many things that we can look into, you know, DEI, for example. You know, sports, your musical program is amazing, but what can we do to make it better? And I always look at that from my business perspective that I bring. I'm into small business. We always try and do better for our customers, you know? And how can we make life simple for everyone? So that's my story. It's short, you know, but I tend to give short answers, I'm sorry.
No, that's good, that's good.
This is sort of a follow, oh.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that. My name's Kristin Fawcett, by the way.
Nice to meet you.
I was wondering, and this is sort of a follow-on to that, because that last question was a little bit about your background, and this one is, falls into the, what do you, what would you say is your primary reason for your interest in serving on the Board of Education?
My contribution as a local community. I, you know, it's on my honest to be, you know, to be there when, you know, the community needs me. And I think that's important, you know, to be here for the community, to give back. And I think I want that to happen, you know, automatically in our kids as well, you know? Whether it's teaching them the way to do that, you know, or being a role model for them, I think it's important.
Okay. And if you were to be appointed to this vacancy, would you have intention to run for either the two-year or six-year term when it comes up in November?
I would love to do that if, of course, the board permits, you know, and if there is consensus that I should do. I'm not planning to go anywhere else, so, unless I die or something, but that's a different story.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Mary, so questions coming from the side of the table now. I have a very typical, easy one. What is the main strength?
Oh, I'm horrible at this, I'm so sorry. My question's the easy, typical one. What is the main strength that you could bring to our Board of Education?
Boy, that's the most loaded question.
It's a tough one.
Easiest, but most loaded. You know, I think there's a lot of things that I, I'm very, I guess I like to empower youth from the beginning. So I think a youth program is where I could help with. Running a small business, we wear many, many different hats, from finance to networking to talking to people. So there's another area I think that we could do better is maybe talk or have community get-togethers on a one-on-one, you know? So those are the things that I think as a small business, you get to learn and bring to the table. So anything related, and of course, it's not just limited to that, you know? It's where the need is. I think if the board feels there's a need that, you know, I need, we need to focus on this, sure, even if it's out of my comfort zone, we need to look at it, because the resolution has to come, you know? So, I hope that answers, thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Maggie Tryon.
Boy, I'm going to get this.
I know, it's back and forth. What do you believe is the main challenge facing our district? And what ideas would you bring to the board to help resolve that?
So I don't know of any challenges as such that you've not publicized yet, so I don't know them. But, you know, there's a lot of things that we can do. And I think one of them is educating kids on the youth level for DEI. And I think just giving them that experience, you know, would be enormous. Small things we can do, like, for example, in the cafeteria, have an international day, you know, where we have some Indian food. I'm just going to throw that out, you know? Or have some Mexican food. You know, let them experience their different cultures. You know, that's a little bit away, but, you know, I think that's important. Our kids, in my opinion, at least in my kids, I think we didn't have that, you know, as a total international day or diversity, you know? Let them have, you know, some places that they can share all their different cultures. You know, interfaith maybe, you know, which I think would be fantastic. There's great organizations in Grand Rapids who do interfaith. And I think they would be, they would love to focus on kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, back this way.
Yes, over here, I'll indicate before I speak. Nice to meet you, Nadine.
Likewise, thank you.
So my name's Kristin Cavell, and I'm wondering what your understanding of the role and purpose of a school board member would be?
Yeah, so I do understand that, you know, we have to abide by the bylaws of FHPS. And of course, we do have to appoint a superintendent. And some of the other things that might go along with it, you know? That might be subcategories that might be done. So I am familiar with board workings. I do belong to the West Michigan Asian Association Board. And I am the, I guess, a recent, or I'm going to be graduating the LGR 2022, which is one of the best. If you haven't heard, LGR 2022, it's the Leadership Grand Rapids Program. It's an amazing program. So that's fantastic. And, you know, like I said, I've been on the Red Cross as well, a Red Cross here in the local chapter. So I've got some experience there as well. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
All right, so here's one, this is sort of a scenario-based situation.
Oops, I did it, goodness. Okay, so here's a scenario-based question. You might be in the parking lot of a grocery store or in the grocery store. Describe your response if a parent is kind of cornered you in a grocery store and asks you to support them on a particular issue or problem they're having. How would you handle that situation if a community member approached you?
So I'd be very open to receiving that question from them. And then, of course, taking it back to our board panel as well. And maybe addressing it with the parties concerned and discussing about it. So, you know, and then, of course, acting on whatever we might come up with, with a solution. I would be in no position to give them a yes or a no, for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that answer?
Thanks. Back over to me. If there were an issue that, where you held an opinion or a perspective that wasn't shared by fellow board members, how would you proceed?
You know, I believe that we all have to talk it out. And we have to know what the reasoning is behind all that, or that yes or no. So if it's unclear, that means one of us, one of us is trying to push the notion that we don't, the other person doesn't know about. And I think clarity is important. And talking about it will give us that clarity. So I think if we can come to that and understand what the other person is, you know, the reasoning for it, then I think we should be able to come up with a solution that, you know, is workable with all of us.
Thank you.
You knew it was me this time, Nadine. Do you have a specific or personal interest in any aspect of Forest Hills' educational or extracurricular programs? Things your kids might have been involved with, things that you might be involved with?
Yes, so my kids, of course, went to FHE, and, you know, they were involved in tennis. They were involved in music. My son played the French horn and the band, great instrument, and great instructors, I must say. Amazing program, you know? There's other schools like Ottawa, Genesee, but I think the program over here, the musical program, is amazing. South Haven, Grand Haven, sorry, Grand Haven or South Haven, one of them has a good program too. But I think our program is good, and I think we can do better. Of course, we can do better, that's my attitude. You know, what can we do to make it better? You know, what tools can we give our teachers? You know, how can we take it to the next level? Thank you.
Wondering, what is your vision for the district? And how can we better serve our students and families?
You know, like I said, with kids, maybe doing the DEI would be a good initiative to put in there. I'd like to see more open dialogue between teachers and the board. I'd like to see more dialogue between the parents and the board. You know, I think if we put ourselves out there, we need to get feedback one-on-one from them and then resolve some of those, if they have any issues, you know? And of course, if they don't, then we need to even publicize those, because those are positives. You know, we need to definitely pride ourselves in those as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the Michigan Association of School Boards offers professional learning for board members. What are your thoughts regarding board professional learning? And would you be available to commit time for that valuable training?
Of course, I'd love it. You know, I think, I mean, I've been on some board trainings, but I'd love to do that again. It's always nice. You know, you always learn from experiences. You always learn from different trainings. And today, my mindset might be something different, and my mindset at the training level will be something different. So I'll always learn, and I'm always open to that. In fact, I'm even learning now, you know, coming into this scenario. So love to do that.
Great.
All right, is there anything else?
Is there anything else that you would like to tell us regarding your desire to volunteer for the school board?
Yeah, I had a whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
No, I'm just kidding. No, I'd love to, you know, be a part of this board, you know? And I think I can make an impact. I think I can, you know, do better. And with that, I think I hope that you all give me a serious consideration. I appreciate the opportunity, really, and the openness and the connectivity, because I did email Ms. Callahan, and she was immediate in responding. That's, that's the level of stuff that I like to do, you know, is get answers right away, and I appreciate that, really, thank you so much. You guys have been amazing. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for coming in. If there are no other questions, you are free for the evening, and we have a few more people to meet.
Likewise, I hope I wasn't too early. Someone said I should take my 25 minutes.
Yes, I'm sorry, I lumped that in. Are there any other questions you had for us? Yes?
Just, yeah, I wouldn't mind, actually. I would like to know, what's a day like in your lives, you know?
Oh.
What do you guys do?
Okay, all right. Well, who would like to?
Like to get to know us?
Yes, yeah.
Left or right is how a book is read.
Right.
Wow. A traditional school board role is that you attend a monthly general meeting that might be an hour and a half. And the week prior to that, you do your business. You sit with the committee, whether it's finance or board, for potentially two hours, because we really dig into what is on those agendas at the board meetings. The board meetings are, is a group approving what was discussed and really dug through at the committee meetings. Every week, our superintendent kind of updates us on what's going on, should that be needed to feed an agenda or discussions at future meetings. And that is a typical board experience up until about the last two years. So we're hoping, as we all come together, that we all continue to join as a family, a big Forest Hills family, and return to that. Now, we're working through challenges and trying to make sure we're all healthy and safe and educated and moving together as a group.
Thank you.
That's my answer.
Can I add one thing? Mary's been on the board for a while. So Kristin and Maggie and Kristin have not been on the board as long. So it's interesting to hear the way back and the current perspective from Mary. So maybe a newer board member can give you some insight into her experience. Thank you.
Well, yeah, what I thought, actually, I may have interpreted your question differently. I thought you wanted to know who the board members were, like, in their typical day. So I was going to say.
That would be nice, too.
I interpreted it differently, because I was going to say, okay, so I myself am a high school English teacher, so my typical day is teaching. And then I come into, prior to the last two years, it really was just two, two meetings a month, and then that was about it. And I learned so much, because it was, it was a peaceful experience where I could ask lots of questions to learn about what it was. I started on the finance committee, and that was a really good place to start, because there was so much nitty-gritty to learn about that I didn't know. I mean, although I am a teacher, I mean, I feel like I really understand curriculum from the bottom up here. But when it came to finance, I had a lot to learn. And so in the last two years, though, this has become a much larger commitment and definitely a lot of emotional toll as well. But I imagine this is something that is, you know, like all things, this too shall pass. But it's been a fantastic learning experience regardless. And I know that I've had friends who have said, oh, you must really want to quit this. And I'm like, I have appreciated learning everything.
Yes.
So that is my experience.
No, I appreciate that, thank you. Yeah, I know, unfortunately, COVID has impacted all of us in certain ways or the other, even my kids, my family, you know? So I'm truly there with you guys.
Excellent. Anything, any other questions you have for any of us?
I wouldn't mind hearing from the other two board members as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Suzanne didn't want to hear.
Yeah, no, I, yeah. I would, I'd love to hear your experience, yes.
Yeah, this is, I'm, I've been on the board for a year and a half. I'm a professor. I teach, teach your education students for Cornerstone University. And I have been in education my entire career. So I am not unfamiliar with strong feelings surrounding education. And so this feels very familiar at times to those kinds of conversations. It's definitely been a learning experience. I think there's a lot of room we have as a district to, like you've said a number of times in your interview, make things even better for our kids and for our families. And it's just been really great. And it's just been really great to be a part of that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Great university, Cornerstone.
By day, I am an independent educational consultant. So I help kids and their families navigate the college application process. So I am very invested in what kids are doing at the high school level as they're looking to move forward. As Kristin said, I'm on the finance committee now where she started out. And you do learn a tremendous amount about what's going on in a district by looking at all of the numbers and the thousands, it seems, of line items that there are in the school budgets. So it's really been kind of eye-opening and even though I, I came on at the same time as Maggie, you know, it's been a little over a year now. And I still learn new things every day. And I imagine that I will continue to learn, learn new things every day for the entire time that I am on the board. Because there's just between different situations that pop up normally and as abnormal events like COVID and things like that, there are always different things that you have to look at and react to and be flexible about. And it's, it's been kind of, it's been a wonderful experience. But it's, it is definitely, as you said, you know, you're, you're constantly learning.
Yes, definitely. And, you know, I had a big learning curve with FAFSA. Tell me nightmare about.
I know, I was helping my daughter with her taxes last night. I thought, why, I forget this. Like all of a sudden, it's like it was just last year and you're doing it again. So I would say my, I would ditto what everybody was saying. The one unique thing I think about being on the board is if you've been very involved in the schools, board service is a little bit different than that and it sounds like you've had experience on other boards where it's a, it's definitely an oversight position. It's not that we're running the school, we're in an oversight role. And I guess one of the things I like the most about being on the board is having some of our vision discussions about the future of education. And I think that's what it's, that's the fun part of being on the board. A couple of years ago, when we'd be together in, in person and having a little bit of time to dig into the details of the numbers and then also have those vision discussions as opposed to thinking, oh my goodness, I'm on this Zoom call for so long or something. So anyway. Yeah, it's, and it is definitely a fun place to be in my, my, this is a great collision of my work interests and personal interests because I'm kind of in the business and education area.
Nice. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Now, I know that Mr. Beam is not on the board, but if you don't mind sharing, you know, your version so that we could hear it out loud.
Sure, sure. This is winding up year 16 for me here in Forest Hills. And it's been wonderful. It's been a, a great learning experience. A week before I started this job, I moved and I got married and started a new job all in that week period. So it's, it's been learning ever since and I'm now a proud parent myself. I did not get the memo. You're supposed to have kids when you're younger so you have all the energy. But my kids are trying to keep me young, that's for certain. They're in fourth grade and sixth grade. And it's probably been the best professional learning experience for me is becoming a father. So it's been great to see our system through the eyes of a parent now as well. And I agree with you, there's constant learning and always growth and improvement we can look to on that. My passion is really looking at the 6,600 hours that we call secondary school. And that's grade seven through 12. We can certainly grow and make improvements at the elementary level. I think so much of the secondary level is still anchored in a vision and a purpose that are several decades old now. And I think what, what we need to do is provide all students with the building block knowledge and skills to learn anything they have their heart and mindset to learn and be successful at that. And we also need to provide them with practice in the dispositions that are needed to be successful in the 21st century. And there's been much written about that. I won't go into all of that. But how I think our system needs to look different is instead of so much of the 6,600 hours of students sitting in a row and listening to an adult talk to them, if we could have a little less of that in more time with students applying what they're learning. The best example where I see that happening, and it has been happening for quite some time and you spoke to it, is in the fine arts. We give kids the tools that adults use. We give them the material that adults are working with, the scores, the playbooks, all of those things. And we give them instruction and we give them practice and we give them feedback and they display their work publicly as well. And it's multidisciplinary. There are many disciplines that come together at that point in time. And I would love to see more of our students understanding what it is that engineers do, what it is that entrepreneurs do, what it is that people out in the world of work are doing and have more connections with that and then see how all these disciplines come into play with that. And so it's really practicing with that work that adults are doing and having more practice with that. I'm convinced more students would move on to learning beyond high school, having a better sense of where they're gravitating toward and perhaps where they're not. And I think that would help the higher education debt crisis that we have. And, and I also think it, it brings about a learner who's more engaged and more motivated. So that's the thing that I'm passionate about. And every time we can get into that work, that's what fills my bucket.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. I'm also a late bloomer in, in having kids. But, you know, if it was the other way around, I would have kids much earlier. You know, and I would have a lot more of them than just two. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Really appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming.
Truly nice to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, I always appreciate hearing you reiterate that vision because that even when I first applied for an open seat was what I proposed. I said, that's the vision I want through the student and it just always makes me feel good to hear that reminded that that is what I'm.
Hi there. Go ahead and have a seat.
Thank you for coming in today. My name's Suzanne Callahan and you're gonna hear from all of us today. I think, just so you know, we're all gonna ask you a few different questions and then we're gonna make sure we leave time at the end for you to ask us a bunch of questions, whatever you want to ask, okay?
Thank you.
All right. So I will start out with the first one. Could you tell us, it's, you know, one thing we could read on the paper, but could you tell, start with some of your personal background and experiences and involvement in the schools and the community? Just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to address you. My name is Lily Langen. I have been in the Forest Hills School District since the beginning of when my oldest son entered kindergarten at Meadowbrook. To give a background, I went to a California school for undergrad at Stanford. I went into it thinking that I would actually maybe go into teaching or education. So my coursework had a lot of child development, youth policy courses during that time as well as in law school. I continued that with my coursework as well as extracurricular activities. That transitioned over when I decided to have kids and then obviously when I decided to check out programs for my two boys. Despite not being in the Forest Hills Northern District or neighborhood, we decided to commit to the immersion program at Meadowbrook. We just thought that it was such a unique program. I knew, I knew that it was a new program. I knew that it wasn't going to currently be all the way to the, the high school level. But I really thought that it had value. And so when my two boys joined that program, I made it my mission, shall we say, to make sure that the curriculum for the program was robust. I joined CHI PAC because I was concerned about making sure the curriculum was going to deliver and continue until they graduated from Forest Hills. With that in mind, I was able to pursue a lot of things and discover how a program like the immersion program worked as well as how the district worked. I met a lot of people in the district. I work with all four building principals as well as Steve Harvey. I worked with Margie Follenger when she was here as the Assistant Superintendent of Instruction. She was monumental in getting our partnership with Western together for us, which is amazing. I also, you know, currently work with Jesus and being the Director of Immersion, he obviously is very involved with Spanish immersion and Chinese immersion. I also worked with Elizabeth Brink as the former Director of Communication now at the foundation. So I was able to do a lot with CHI PAC and making sure that we work to enable our families and students to get the most out of it and we're still doing that now.
Excellent. Good. It's all coming back to me. I feel like I remember, that seems like it was just yesterday when you were just getting started with CHI PAC.
Hi, I'm Kristin Fawson. Hi.
My question is, what is the primary reason for your interest in serving on the Forest Hills Board of Education?
Well, I think I touch upon my passion for education and child development. So not to repeat that, I think with that in mind and the skills I developed in my work as well as my volunteerism, the past two years have been very challenging for everyone. It's brought up a lot of tension and issues that we need to address. So I thought that was time for me to use my skills and my background and, and desire to do good for our students in our district. And this was the time to do it.
Okay. And if you were appointed to this vacant seat, would you intend to run for either the two-year or the six-year term come November?
Yes. Yes, the simple answer. But part of the reason why I'm so attracted to this position of the appointment of serving out the rest of this, this term until November is because I view it as an opportunity for me to see kind of behind the curtain what actually is entailed in being a board member. I know intellectually what that means, but doing it is certainly a different thing than knowing it intellectually versus getting into the trenches.
Great. Thank you.
Hello, Lily. Nice to see you. I have the easy question for you. What is the main strength you could bring to our board?
I think my ability to work with different types of people. As the president of CHI PAC, I do that with my board members. We don't all agree on the same thing, but I make sure that we have the process in place so that even if a decision is made and not 100% unanimous decision, the people who didn't vote for that is okay with it. I think that's something that we need, we need to give grace to people. We need to understand that everyone's working towards the same goals of having our students succeed and the program succeed.
Hi, Lily.
Hi.
So my question is, what do you believe is the major challenge facing our district and how would you address it?
Can I give more than one answer?
Sure.
I, if I had to think about it, I, I can think of four challenges and they're kind of related. So the first challenge is obviously COVID. Even before COVID, we had a real concern about mental health amongst our students. And we know that before COVID, suicide was the number two reason for students ages 10 to 24 to commit suicide. That's the number two reason, cause of death. COVID unfortunately just made it even worse. You know, we have our students facing regular student issues, the stresses of being a student and now the stresses of dealing with COVID and all the things that came brought to mind. I would use funds, the COVID relief funds, the ESTRA funds to help hire more counselors, to create programs to address and help these students who have all these issues. That's one thing that I, I feel important. Related to that obviously leads to the learning loss that we, we unfortunately have now. Nationwide, we know that we've lost five to nine months on average of learning for students. Now, it's easy to say that they should be at this level, but they're not. So we need to meet them at that level and find out ways to help them. Create programs, hire more teachers, hire staff, make sure they get to school. So we have bus drivers driving them to school. We have the support staff to help them. That really leads to the third problem, staff shortage. How do we address that? We make sure that our compensations are competitive, not only with money, but also non-monetary things that we can do, flex pay, teacher sharing, more flexible sick leave, things like that. Make it more innovative. And then the fourth one, which supports everything, is to make sure that we have enough funding. So we need to make sure that public funds aren't derailed by actions or petitions that go on to divert those funds from our public schools. So we know that we have state funding, but we also, fortunately for us, we have a lot of donors in our community who shore up that. So let's make sure that we keep that.
Hi Lily, I'm next. My name's Kristin Cavell. And I'm wondering, what is your understanding of the role and purpose of a board member?
I believe that there are four main things that board members should be doing. Obviously hire the superintendent and oversee his work. Also be good stewards of the budget. Make sure that the budget is supporting programs, opportunities for, for our kids so they reach their own potentials and goals. Third is to make sure that we implement a good policy and to assess those policies to always be consistent with our mission and the vision for the district. And fourth is maybe a softer duty, but basically be the eyes and ears of our families and students. As CHI PAC, we are basically that for our families. Sometimes they feel more comfortable approaching one of us rather than the principals or the teachers and we can be the advocate for them. And so I think that's one duty that maybe might be not as official, but that's something that I think we should do.
I'm gonna tag right into that. I'm gonna tag right into that, sorry. So with that idea of parents, I've got a scenario-based question. So imagine that you're at the grocery store and you get cornered by a parent and they want to share a problem or a concern with you. How would you handle that? And they want you to take, and they're asking you to take their side in this. How would you handle that?
Sure. I get approached by parents unofficially too when I'm shopping. It's amazing that I see people I know at the grocery store because I'm not used to doing or having that in California. But Forest Hills is small enough and big enough, you know, to feel comfortable. So I think if I was approached by a parent on an issue that I was charged with for the board and felt that I had the information, I would obviously share that. If I felt that I didn't have the expertise or information, I would quite frankly say, can I get your name and contact information? I can get back to you. I'm assuming that's a friendly interaction. If it's not, then I would have to say, I'm sorry, this is, I'm not on my official time. Let me get your information and I'll get back to you.
Great. Thank you. And back over to me. If there were an issue on which you personally held an opinion or a perspective that wasn't shared by your fellow board members, how would you proceed?
I would proceed the way I've always proceeded in, in my work life as well as my volunteer life. It would be a consensus. On my current board, we all have very strong opinions at times on certain things. And I think I've created a situation where people are free to voice their opinions either during our board meetings or if I get a sense that someone's holding back, I will often reach out to them after a meeting and make sure that they're okay with, with the process that we took. So that if it's not 100%, it's a, it might be 80%, but everyone's okay with it.
Great. Thank you.
My turn, Lily. Do you have a specific or personal interest in any aspect of Forest Hills' educational or extracurricular in any aspect of Forest Hills' educational or extracurricular programs? We've obviously heard quite a bit about CHI PAC, if you'd like to elaborate on that or if there are other things where you've dabbled and you'd like to share some of your thoughts about those with us.
Personally, aside from CHI PAC, my son is in the STEM program. So I could see that be as robust as possible for obvious reasons. But also, I think programs like STEM or Project Next or the AP Capsule Project, all of those that offer alternative ways or paths from the traditional method should be further developed and offered to more than just, you know, for STEM and Project Next at the Northern High School. Perhaps we can see it go to Eastern and Central. Also see what other non-traditional paths or opportunities we can do. That is what intrigues me, to see what curriculum development can become for the non-traditional learners.
Great.
Sorry.
You're tagged.
Something. What is your vision for the district? And how can we better serve our students and families?
I think everything we talked about kind of goes towards that question. I think we just need to make sure that not only do we celebrate the achievements of the district, because we have a lot to be proud of. You know, we don't, we're not an expensive location to move into because we don't have a good public school system. We do, and that's why people want to come into our area. So we should celebrate it, but also know that we need to work hard to maintain that and also to be innovative and to create more opportunities for our families and our students. So I feel that if we keep on striving and keep on being able to be flexible and pivot with challenges, I think that will achieve the ultimate in making sure that our families and students are served.
Hi again, Lilly. So the Michigan Association of School Boards offers professional learning for board members. What are your thoughts regarding board professional learning? And would you be available to commit time to that valuable training?
Yes. I'm not sure how much time that's required, but I know that for things I do for my son's classrooms, I'm also many times the room parent. So I do the parties every year at Meadowbrook and parties every year at Northern Trails, no parties at Middle School. But, so I do those things in addition to just CHI PAC and all the things that are involved. I obviously attend CHI PAC-sponsored events. Not all of them, because obviously we want different board members to be represented at different, you know, events. So I would strongly be open to attending something like that, which would enable you to get more ideas and skills to help you with your duties and responsibilities. Thank you.
Great. All right. So is there anything else you would like to tell us regarding your desire to serve on the board?
A couple of things. I think these past couple of years have been very challenging. And so I just want to say thank you for showing up and being so determined and committed to doing your job. It's a thankless thing sometimes to be a volunteer because people think there'll be so much to do it, but yet they don't maybe show up and you do it and no one says thank you. So thank you. The other thing I want to say is I'm committed. My two boys will be here for quite a while. So I'll be here for quite a while. So I just want to make sure that I convey my commitment and my desire to see this district succeed now and when we leave.
Excellent. What kind, do you have any questions for us?
Yes. And I don't know who to ask, so anyone can jump in. I guess I would like to hear from maybe each of you or a few of you. What's the most satisfying thing that has occurred for you as a board member?
Ooh, Mary, we'll go, we'll go this way. Well, because we, yeah.
All right, let me reflect on my 18 years, Lilly, and see if I can pull a couple out of my hat. You know what? And I've said this and people have heard me, and I think it's cliche. I cannot even begin to put into words the people I've met in this district. I have even in difficult times quoted to a reporter saying that I have no doubt that there will be people that will come forward and sit in that chair and want to continue board service because this is a gift that needs to be treasured and continue to be nurtured. And it is such a sense of pride for me that the people I've met in this role have just knocked my socks off. Not just adults, but our superintendent, who is trying to rethink the secondary experience, has sort of assembled a Student Advisory Council. And working with those 25 kids who are from all three of our high schools, they are going to go make the world a better place. And that is because of our community, because of our superintendent, our board and his team. So we're in a great place and it is a huge sense of pride for me that I've gotten to be a little part of that.
Thank you. Yeah, I have not been on the board for 18 years, only three at this point. But, you know, I can echo what Mary's saying as well. But for me, because I wanted to be a part of this, because I love education so much as a teacher myself, that I have seen, I've had so much value in learning all of the various aspects involved in education, many that I was unfamiliar with before. And in that as well, the necessity of communication with a variety, the variety of community members that, gosh, I treasure that so much. Learning so many different people's lives and experiences and how education sort of chemically mixes with that and creates this new potion. And each family, each person, or even community members that don't have kids in the school and how the schools still impact them. I just love hearing those stories and understanding more about that and allowing that to help guide how I participate in the school board. So, gosh, I love to learn and that would be, that's a value for me.
Was that something that you had in mind before joining it? And so that came to fruition because of that?
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, my curiosity drove me to this. I mean, initially, it really is, I like the vision of 21st century learning, as you pointed out, STEM, Project Next. We have our immersion programs. Good Willie's another example. And I wanted to see this vision strengthened and continued. And then the other personal part for me was wanting to learn so much more about the community I'm a part of. I love to be a part of this and I want to endlessly know more.
Right, right. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
What's the most satisfying thing that you've gotten out of being a board member?
Yeah. So for me, I have always loved education because of the kids that I get to work with in education. And I would still say, I've only been on the board for a year and a half, but I've been a part of Forest Hills Schools for a lot longer than that with my own children. And even as a parent volunteer in a classroom or on the PTO or coaching something, the interaction that I have with the kids and the hope that I see in them and the excitement that I see in them for whatever it is I'm working with them on, I find it incredibly inspirational. And I, I can't imagine a time in my life where I don't have that in some way feeding into who I am. I think it's just really inspirational.
Can you give an example of a setting that you've had interactions with that you, that come to mind when you're saying this?
On, on the board?
Yes, while you were on the board.
I would say most recently, I went to my very first Student Advisory Council meeting. And I just thought getting to talk to all those high schoolers about all of their ideas for what would make our district stronger. It's just, it's just a great conversation to get to be a part of.
Their thinking.
Yeah. And then I actually ran into one of them where she was working a couple days later. And she wanted to keep talking to me about it. And that was really cool that she wanted to engage.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, I would say that I am constantly amazed by what I see in the kids and their growth from when they're little to after they graduate. Like, I just love and I get all teary-eyed watching the little videos of the second graders doing their little performances and all of the things that they do. And watching them grow and seeing kids that have then left and gone to college that also then end up doing videos that come back to us that we get to watch. And then I get teary-eyed again at all these, you know, young adults that are doing these amazing things because of the experiences they had here in Forest Hills. And it's just very deeply gratifying to be, you know, I'm like Maggie, just a year in. So I'm at the very tip of the iceberg, but I'm like, I'm so grateful to be a part of that and to know that it's very satisfying to be on a board that has and embraces this vision for doing amazing things for kids.
Thank you.
I would say one of the most satisfying parts of this is the, the vision casting that we do, talking about the potential for STEM and Project Next. And I remember that from a, from a parent volunteer perspective or when, or, you know, hearing, you know, some of these ideas. But when, when we hear the vision, you know, we discuss these things, but then seeing the reality of it when we have staff members come and the, the high level of professional learning that happens in the district. And then when we get to see the showcased examples. Because if we're not in the classroom, a lot of it's showcased at a board meeting. And I think that's the one thing that is unique too, is when you are a parent volunteer and you're in there in the trenches doing it, but when you're presented at the board meetings, some of the, the decisions that are being made on curriculum and all the work. You know, we just heard a week ago about the deep effort that went in by a whole host of teachers picking textbooks and curriculum. We're not picking those things. They're picking them and the professional learning that goes in, the process, all that. I'm, it's so satisfying to see teachers that have that passion. And it's a, a deep professionalism that they're bringing to this. So when we talk about 21st century learning and all the, the future skills that employees need in the workforce, our teachers get it and they're doing it and we see that in, in place. So I like being at the, the high level of it and then seeing those examples from the, the teachers. And I would say the showcase of it is when they come and show things at the board meetings. So, yeah, and working with Dan.
Suzanne, I'd just like to add a little something to that to say that we really do become ambassadors for this information. So when we learn of all of these amazing things and people approach us with questions, we're able to answer them. And I find that is, you know, in addition to what I was saying about the satisfaction of communicating with everyone, when there are concerns or questions that we do know many of those answers from what we do here.
Thank you. I feel that, I feel the same way with the immersion program because many of the parents have the same questions that we've heard time over time. And so it's nice to be able to just alleviate those concerns without them having to go to Principal Shaw or Principal Gutierrez. We're just like, hey, we know. Do you want to have a lowdown? And we'll tell you the, you know, facts versus the aspirations, so to speak.
Any other questions you have for us?
This was not typical these past couple of years. So I would maybe not ask you this question if it was a different time, but have any of you felt concerned for your own personal safety or those of your family?
No.
Honest answer? Yeah, I'm going to say I've been a little nervous sometimes. There have been situations that have been surprising. But truly, no.
No.
I mean, I would be lying if I said I didn't think about it sometimes. But it's nothing that keeps me up at night or makes me not want to show up.
What, what are you thinking when you're going through that thought process? Anything partic, anything particular or just in general?
I guess I don't know exactly what you mean.
Are there aspects? When I'm percolating at night and I'm concerned about something, it's usually because of a certain event that happened either during the day or, you know, during the past few weeks. Is, are you worried because of certain things that have happened? Or is it just a general concern?
I mean, I would just maybe say general. And also just, I always worry, did I, was that handled correctly? Could there have been more information? I would say that.
Okay. And one more question. What kind, what kinds of questions or queries have you had from the committee or families that someone new to the board should, you know, be expecting or maybe should be looking towards?
What questions? Oh, the kinds of questions that we get?
Right.
Okay. Well, one of the ways that we do get communications or questions is sometimes it's the informal conversation, you know, at a, at a board meeting. But examples of things that would come into the board would be an operational question that will say, why, something about a teacher or a coach or a field trip or something like that, some, some event. Is the dance on, is the dance off? And we would get a question like that. That isn't in our purview. So that would be an example of a question that we would get. And we have a process in place that we try to make sure that questions that come into us get directed to the person that should answer them. And I work with Val and Dan. So as a board, we communicate as a board and I make sure that I would get that off to whoever would answer it. And our, the policy of anything that comes into us is the question that people have should likely be answered by the person that's closest to whatever the dance, the field trip, the coach, the whatever should be. So if it comes to us, we're thinking, okay, either they aren't sure who to go to or it didn't get resolved. So I would go, in, in my role or on the board role, is I would go back to Val and Dan and say, hey, who is this supposed to be? Even though likely they've already talked to Scott Hade or Tim Shaw or whoever it needs it to be. So really, a lot of questions come in are more, I would say, operational-type questions because we're, we aren't running the school. We don't, doing the day-to-day. And I think that even in some of our board meetings, there have been some times where I thought, I actually think that they think I'm the principal or the teacher. But that it's in an oversight situation. So I would say that those would be some of the questions that come in. And then it, over the last couple of years, it's just been COVID-type of stuff, that if somebody loves something or hates something. And we just try to funnel all those through. But at the end of the day, it's coming in to us and trying to help get it to the right party, which my main contact would be the superintendent and Val to get that directed.
So I feel like there is a pre-COVID, which was before March 13, 2020. The only reason I know that date is because my husband and I went to see a concert and so that was the last concert we went. And then there's post-COVID. So pre-COVID, typically, how much time would you spend answering questions and inquiries?
Not, we'll let, we'll let the 18-year representative say zero.
I listened to these two try to tell you what was so satisfying about their experience. And I'm so proud of them because they have had their entire board tenure in this crazy time. And they say things like, what do you normally hear about public comments? And we laugh because if we had five public comments over the course of a year, it would be shocking. Yeah, nothing. We have very little communication. We might get somebody like Suzanne said, this field trip was canceled or I'm not really comfortable that my child is not playing on the team. And we direct that to the person that should handle the issue. And 99% of the time, it stops there because we just have to connect the right people to get it resolved. Sometimes the discussion continues, but we're just in different times now. But traditionally, this is not a big part of what we do.
Yeah, I actually had one year on the board before all of this sort of began. And I describe it as peaceful. And that was it. I learned so much. I came, we've discussed, and that was it. It has been something different the last couple of years. But that also gives me plenty of hope and expectation that these, this too shall pass. Things change. They come in phases. So I imagine that, you know, you had mentioned that you're interested in running in the fall, that I can't, I can't really envision the next six years being the same as these past two years have been.
The one thing that's been consistent all along is talking about, well, I said the other day, we have to walk and chew gum. We are still pushing ahead with STEM, Project Next, Good Willie, Gone Boarding, all the theater programs. The, the district is going and this stuff happens along the way. That is our role, is to support our superintendent and make sure that he's got the back of all 1,000 employees and almost 10,000 students here. So that is what gets us up every day and communicating a little bit here and there. Even, even in this, we can do it. So any other questions you have for us?
No, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Lilly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Glad you're here.
Can I, I've only ever seen you guys before.
Sure. Look at you. Mary tried to move.
I was going to say, did you prefer CJ then?
CJ is, well, no, yeah, for my whole life. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Hello, hello? Hi, thank you. CJ.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in today. We are looking forward to getting to know you a little bit better. I'm Suzanne Callahan. We're all going to ask you a few questions here and then at the end, there'll be plenty of time for you to ask us questions, okay?
Great.
Alrighty. So we got the letter and all of that, but we want to hear from you. Could you start with a little bit of your personal background and experience and involvement with the school and the community?
Certainly. I'll try not to eat up too much clock with the first question, I guess, because I think I probably could. Most of my story involves Forest Hills. I, 28 years ago, it would have been that I was a kindergartner at Meadowbrook, minister filings class. We grew up about three minutes from, from here. I was in high school when this building was built. And so I've seen a lot change, you know, in my time as a student here and then, and then after as well. I have four siblings. We were all, you know, quite engaged through, with every school activity and sport that was offered to us throughout. We had the parents that met back up at 10 o'clock, you know, in the evening type of situation for a long time. And into high school, I was the same. I took advantage of as much as I could. I played sports throughout and played varsity sports. I took advantage of AP classes. I was an MHSAA Scholar-Athlete in 2006 in the state, which was a unique thing or award, I guess. And I did a lot in this building. I did a lot with, with arts, with music and the choirs and bands and with musical theater. We were joking out, or she was asking me, she was getting me in here, don't, you're not nervous, don't, don't be nervous, you know, it's, everything's fine. And I said, I've, I've known a lot of nervousness in this building. I told her, the first girl I ever kissed in high school was on this stage in front of a thousand people and the, in the first ever summer stock. And I said, I have, I have been crippled with nervousness in this place, so I think I'm doing okay. But that, so arts, you know, played a huge role in my upbringing and from my parents and, and involved in everything that I could from that aspect through Forest Hills Northern and the district at large. And that's actually been a really good way to remain connected after high school for me. I have, you know, the privilege of being good friends with Dave Howard and Paul Balkens and, and I've been able to, to play in the orchestra for, I think somewhere around 20 musicals since, you know, leaving high school in that college and young adult phase, which I suppose segues to where I am now, beginning my journey as a parent in, in the district. We have four kids at home. Our oldest is a seven-year-old, she's a first grader at Knapp Forest. So we're just beginning, you know, to experience all of this. And of course, the entirety of our experience so far is under the veil of COVID. So the last, even just a month, have been so rejuvenating to, to come in for March's Reading Month and just to even walk around the school and see the art and the pictures. And we feel like we're finally about to enter, you know, officially into the phase of being involved in our kids' educations and upbringing in the district. So there's, there's not a lot about my story that doesn't involve Forest Hills through and through.
Fantastic. Wonderful.
All right, my turn. What would you say is the primary reason for your interest in serving on the school board?
Primary as in I can only have one?
No, you can have more than one.
Okay. Well, there is a primary, I suppose. There, there's certainly a most important and that is my love for kids and my desire to give my children and all of the children of this district what I feel I received from, from Forest Hills. And I would, I would put my K through 12 experience, you know, all things included, up against anybody's anywhere. And I feel like I had every opportunity and was able to find myself and ask questions and had mentors. And that's what I want for, for four particular kids and for 10,000 kids and for 10,000 after, after them. And my dad is a public school teacher for 36 years, just retired last year. So, so teaching and educating and helping kids discover and learn and engage is just sort of the way that we were raised and what I always saw. And that's certainly a big part of who I am too. So first and foremost, it would, it would be that. For the why, I guess I, I guess there's a different perspective in terms of why now. I'm really fortunate to, to know Doug Josephson quite well for, for a long time and to have learned from him and watched him in this role and have him as a supporter. And we've talked for years that this, you know, could be a venue where I'm really called to be and where I could, you know, put my skills for, for the betterment of the kids in the district. But the why now, you know, really has taken shape in the last year, six months, you know, maybe, just as I look at the changes in the world at large, you know, in how we treat each other and how we can form opinions and how we can stand by opinions and the way that that affects the kids around us unknowingly or without us realizing and how it has, you know, now seemingly made its way into public education anyway. And it's, it's right on the doorstep now or it's inside. And so I've felt a real pull against misinformation in my professional career. It's, as a pharmacist in a hospital, the last two years have probably been very similar to you guys, have been a constant battle against misinformation and trying to say what is factual, even when it's ever changing and it's ever evolving. But, so I'm a large opponent against misinformation and I, and I want to give my all now, I think is the time or maybe a critical juncture where we have to step into, to make sure that we can do what's best for, for kids in that aspect and that we can keep focus on what matters in the district, which is that. And I guess the third, if I still have another 30 seconds, would be the time that I have. The profession that, the career that I have always had for the last 10 years or so has been fairly time consuming. It's, I drove myself into a pretty small niche in the world of clinical pharmacy and cardiac ICU and heart and lung transplant and researching and writing and speaking and all of that. And between that and family, a year ago, I probably would not have said, this is something I can do, you know, and give my effort towards. But more recently, four or five months ago, an opportunity kind of found me and it was an opportunity to, to change to a different balance of, of work and life. And it was the exact moment, from a family perspective anyway, coached soccer teams and start to get in classrooms and do all of that, and it just struck the chord that maybe that is the nudge, that saying again, that the time is, is now. So between all of that is, I guess, how I've, I've ended up in this seat here right now.
Okay. And as a quick follow-up to that, if you were to be appointed to this vacant seat, would you intend to run for either the two or the six-year term come November?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. I, and I would lean towards the six-year term, certainly. I could see myself doing this for many terms if I still have the ability to do it. I have at least 17 consecutive years left with a personal stake in, in the district. So, so yeah, I have plenty of desire to continue serving, yeah, for as long as necessary or I can, yeah.
Thank you.
It's my turn, CJ. And point of clarification before I ask the question, he referenced a longstanding relationship with someone named Doug Josephson. Several of you might not know who that is.
I heard his name with a question mark.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
He was elected to the board with me in 2004 and we got to serve together delightfully for 12 years. So just so you know what that reference was.
Yes.
Now, I have a very tough question for you, CJ. What is the main strength you would bring to our board?
I'd like to think there are many. Maybe one that I think is one of my personal strengths, yeah, other than passion, a more tangible skill, I suppose, would be sort of an objective mindset and analytical mindset that is required, you know, in the field of pharmacy and in medicine, you know, evidence-based decision-making. If you don't know, there's an expert somewhere that knows and you need to know what you don't know so that the people who, who are knowledgeable are the ones who are really feeding into it. But I think just so my, the way that I process problems and problem solve, the way that I assess information is fairly objective. And especially again, in today's world where opinions are formed and disseminated with very little evidence, I feel strongly, you know, in the ability to assess facts and ask clarifying questions and really make sure that what we're doing is in the best interest of the kids in the district.
Wonderful.
Yeah. What do you believe is the major challenge facing our district and what do you see as a good way to address that challenge?
It sort of saddens me what comes to my mind first, I guess. But I, I think maybe the biggest challenge we have in the district right now is, is a trust problem, at least, at least with some people in the district. And if it's, if it's a small number, it has certainly, you know, amplified to seem like a very big problem. I don't, I don't necessarily think that's our doing or your doing by, by any stretch. But, but I, you know, again, it's the world that we're living in now of sort of mistrust and misinformation a little bit and skepticism and, and that has made its way here. In terms of a solution, I, I had a thought actually Monday night, leaving, leaving the meeting. I thought, public comment at the end makes a lot of sense so that you can give information to people beforehand. And I wondered to myself, you know, couldn't there be another agenda item perhaps specifically designed to address comment from the last meeting? You know, just 30 days have passed to reemphasize to people that we, these were the, the common things that we heard, common concerns, and we have noted them, we've taken them to heart. Here's what we've done in the last 30 days. This is again, my objective self sort of saying, here's what is happening objectively, what we're doing, here's what is still planning to be done, just to again, be vocal about hearing people and their concerns. Because I, I really believe there's, there's more that connects us than, than takes us apart in the district. I really think some of these voices are doing what they think is best for their kids. I think some are hard to reach because they refuse to listen and there's always going to be those people, I suppose, in a crowd. But I think there's a lot that can be done to start to mend that by just, by maybe facing it head-on and, and being very open that we know busting is still a problem. These are the things we're legitimately trying to do. We are doing everything we can, you know, or whatever the case may be, just, just so that people know that they're being heard even more and that their voices are, yeah, being, being heard and their concerns addressed.
Thank you.
Hi CJ, I'm next, Kristina Vell. What is your understanding of the role and purpose of a school board member?
I know Doug Josephson's in the room and he's going to be really upset if I totally botch this, because we talked, again, we talked about this for years. And I guess I think, I guess my definition of the school board is kind of in two, in two parts. One sort of bullet points, I suppose, are very, you know, objective responsibilities and the other is more of a global responsibility. Of course, hiring and collaborating and being a checks and balances system and all things related to the superintendent, of course, and drafting and managing a budget for the district year-to-year, kind of as, as the more bullet pointy things. But then more at large, I think, just making sure that all of the things being done through the superintendent and throughout the district, things coming into the district are aligned with the, the vision of the district, the guiding principles that, that are set forth to be that governing body that just makes sure everything is, is on the path that, that we have envisioned for Forest Hills and the students in Forest Hills. And then finally, I suppose, to, to sort of be a public face of the district out in the community, at football games and in supermarkets and everywhere else, to be, to be personable and approachable and to have genuine concern for, for the concerns of the people that we're serving. And just so that people know that the school board is there with the same goals in mind as everyone else and to make sure that they see that embodiment of the vision and principles that we have laid out for the district or that you have laid out for the district.
Thank you.
So going to the grocery store, I've got a scenario question for you. Okay? So describe your response to a parent if you're cornered in the grocery store and they have a problem and they want you to take their side. How would you handle that? It always comes to the grocery store.
I was going to say, I believe that that is probably something that does happen. I would, I think first be empathetic and sympathetic and again, somebody who is, who can show concern for their concern and not someone who's, you know, I'm not working right now and this is inappropriate and storming off or, you know, somebody who is personable in that manner, but also someone who is very clear that there is a hierarchy for these things, there's an organizational chart for this. And I guess, and certainly to help direct them to where their concern would be best brought first at least. And that would depend whether it's a school, a teacher problem or a coach problem or a curriculum problem or whatever, to just try to be sympathetic to, to the concern, but, but firm enough that, you know, this is not the place, this isn't where board matters happen. This really isn't something that comes to the board at this stage anyway and you'll be best served by bringing it to the appropriate person first.
Good. Thanks.
Back to me. If there were an issue where you held a particular opinion or perspective that was not shared by your fellow board members, how would you proceed?
I have no doubt that occurs from time to time. Again, my, my first thought is that I'm, I'm an evidence guy, but there's also a lot that I don't know. And I can make what I think is a very well-formed opinion based on the evidence or best practice and what I think is best supported. But there's, there's always more and I find that every single time. And so my, I guess my first thought would be to get familiar with the reasons for the other opinion and to ask about them and to take them in and accept them as, as equal play, you know, without a kind of a preconceived, you know, notion for, for sticking with my But ultimately, I, I think unity is, especially now in this community, something that, that has to be a fact, it has to be a thing. And I certainly recognize that I am not always right and in my opinion doesn't always prevail. And even if I continue to feel strongly about it, if, if we have, if there are seven people and six of them feel that something is in the best interest of kids, then that's, there's a lot of smart people sitting at this table as well and better than sticking to guns, you know, bar none and being a dissenter and doing that. I think the, especially with the scrutiny involved now, I think being a unified front is probably more important than ever. And that would probably be my, my stance, assuming it wasn't something that I, you know, was absolutely crazy passionate about and ardently opposed to, which I can't think of an example of what that would be. So, so yeah, sticking with personal opinion, but certainly valuing unity on the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay CJ, I'm, knowing Vivian's only a first grader, so my question is any specific or personal interest you might have in the academic or extracurricular or programmatic activities in Forest Hills? But we've always, already heard about some of your history, so if you'd like to elaborate on any of that now or in the past, use your time.
Certainly. I mean, I guess it's one of the things we most look forward to about the next 12, 15, 18 years is doing the things. My parents were very involved, my wife's parents were very involved and it was, it was, especially looking back, a really incredible thing to, to have parents involved in what we were doing. And that is our 100% goal and plan. Certainly to do things in the classroom, especially at the elementary level where that's, you know, perhaps what it is mostly about or limited to in some aspects, is just being there and being present and showing up and surprising people, you know, and like, just like March's Reading Month, it was wonderful. But certainly going, going forward and doing things to the benefit of, of kids and things like Project Charlie, things like certainly music and finding other kids' passions and what they do and finding, whether my kids are doing them or not really, but being somebody who encourages programs like that to, to continue and helps get them off the ground if that's what's needed and certainly to step in and play a role in them if I can personally.
What is your vision for the district and how do you think we can better serve our students and families?
Better serve. Well, I share the, the vision that is already laid out for, for the district. Individualizing education and letting, I mean, taking an individual approach to, to let everybody achieve their individual potential and find their individual path after they leave Forest Hills. I know in this district that that means majority going to college, but again, we have a changing world and that doesn't have to be the case and to empower kids to, to find what is best for them moving forward is, is key and is paramount, I think. How to do that, you know, to be honest, would, I think probably require a more in-depth knowledge than I have sitting here about what we're actually, what we're already doing. And again, especially in the middle school and secondary buildings and classrooms and, you know, I know we've moved that's perhaps what it is mostly about or limited to in some aspects, is just being there and being present and showing up and surprising people, you know, and just like March's Reading Month, it was wonderful. But certainly going forward and doing things to the benefit of kids and things like Project Charlie, things like certainly music and finding other kids' passions and what they do and finding, whether my kids are doing them or not, really, but being somebody who encourages programs like that to continue and helps get them off the ground if that's what's needed, and certainly step in and play a role in them if I can personally.
What is your vision for the district and how do you think we can better serve our students and families?
Better serve. Well, I share the vision that is already laid out for the district. Individualizing education and letting, taking an individual approach to let everybody achieve their individual potential and find their individual path after they leave Forest Hills. I know in this district that that means majority going to college, but again, we have a changing world and that doesn't have to be the case, and to empower kids to find what is best for them moving forward is key and is paramount, I think. How to do that, you know, to be honest, would, I think, probably require more in-depth knowledge than I have sitting here about what we're actually, what we're already doing. And again, especially in the middle school and secondary buildings and classrooms. And, you know, I know we've moved more towards personalized learning and personalized mastery, which I think is phenomenal, and allowing kids to engage in their learning and help assess their learning is so pivotal. That's certainly how, you know, I approach music lessons for kids and older adults and everybody. It's such an important thing to involve, and I think, I know that we're doing that to the extent of which I don't know exactly all of the tiers, to be fair. But more of that is what I would like to do, and whether that's with technology, whether that's with experiences or new offerings of classes or programs, other partnerships outside the district, all of that, I think, would be to the benefit of the individual learner and would warrant a lot of exploration. So that's a little thin, but that's...
Thank you.
It's fine CJ. The Michigan Association of School Boards offers professional learning for board members. What are your thoughts regarding board professional learning? And would you be available to commit time for this valuable training?
Absolutely, absolutely. I look at this role not like I look at, you know, coaching a soccer team, which, to be fair, has a lot of training nowadays anyhow, or a simple coming into a classroom to volunteer, where you can kind of do it and be what you are and be good. This, to me, is much more of a vocation, much more of a calling that I think does require effort and training and gaining of knowledge and a desire to gain knowledge. And I 100% would support doing that. I mean, I would say that I might need more of that than most of the other applicants just from a sheer, you know, experience in public education perspective. And so, yeah, I would readily look to do those things. I've seen a little bit of the content and some of the things that MASP offers out there already, and, yeah, would fully love to engage in that, to be better at this job.
Great, thanks CJ.
The fact that you just knew what MASP was is pretty impressive. Okay, so that's good. All right, so is there anything else you would like to tell us regarding your desire to serve on the board?
I guess just that it's rooted in what I was given here, and that what, that's just my only wish for my kids, whether they see it when they're seniors in high school or not, later on, that they could look back and really appreciate all of the opportunity they had, all of the curiosity they were granted, all of the exploration they got to do, and how the system turned them into knowledgeable people, but also, you know, rounded people, equitable people, and productive people wherever they land. And I have such a desire to be whatever help in driving that forward for all the kids across the district in whatever ways that I can. And I, again, I stretch 28 years back and at least 17 years ahead, so I feel like I know Forest Hills well. I know the culture of Forest Hills, I know what the community of Forest Hills wants, and even if we're at kind of a trickier time perhaps than years past, I'm very wanting to commit whatever skills and assistance I can to keep us on the path that we're on, to keep us on the path that I knew going forward. And, yeah, just to let kids excel in this district.
Excellent. All right, so now, what questions do you have for us? Any of us individually or as a group, any questions you have?
Sure. There just seems like, there's so many priorities and objectives, you know, things that I'm sure we wish we could tackle all at once, and we can't tackle them all at once, I assume, whether it's a budget limitation or a time limitation or whatever. So I guess I'm just interested, when you have priorities that are all good for kids, you know, that would all be steps up, that would all be upgrades or new, how do you tease through those to find what is priority number one?
Okay, I'll start that out, and then I'm actually going to have Superintendent Bean jump in here a little bit. Let's talk about that. So there, I will just say, there are no lack of great ideas that come from, if you think the community has ideas, the teachers and staff have ideas, there's always many ideas and only so much time in the day. So I'll say, one thing that's kind of been a guiding tool in the last few years is we talked a little bit about, I'm going to steal your small bets, big bets, medium-sized bets, that a lot of times we'll try things out and then say, is this something, if a teacher's interested in it, let's try it out, and then see, does this percolate up overall? And is this something, then, that we want to drive in that direction? So there's a couple of things that are happening. You know, we've got this vision piece, when you talk about the mission and the vision of the organization. This is where we're going, and we've got to stay on the tracks, you know, we're going down the road, and we've got all the daily things that are happening. So what are the little things we could do along the way, and then when do we make a big investment in something? So that's how we sort of prioritize. And then when something bubbles up, I know one of the things, I will not tell you anything you don't know, that having three attendance areas, three different cultures, personalities, desires, we try to allow that to happen, where the great ideas come from the people that are closest to doing the work. So I guess from the board perspective, we get to observe those examples and then support Dan, and when Dan says, "I want us to really embrace 21st century learning, and there's only so much time in the day, how can we have these kids joyful when they come into school?", then we say, "Yeah, we've got your back, let's do this." So if it's a financial decision, or he says, "We need to look at how we lay out the time of the day," the cool thing is, we're not running the schools, but we're creating an environment where Dan hopefully can make the decisions where the experts can do those things. So I guess that's sort of my long-winded way of saying, we try to look at the big vision and that we have a shared vision of that in the future, and how can we create a culture and environment where the teachers feel like we've got their back? So if they want to do something a little bit out there, but as a little investment, and we say, "Yeah, this is good, let's try it out," and, oh, didn't work, let's try something else. So, but at the same time maintaining the high expectations and academic performance that all of our families want. So I don't know if I even answered that, but that's sort of how it works. It's like the big picture and the daily, daily support.
Your question is a challenging one, because there's scarcity of resources and resources of every type. And then you have to manage those, and you have to, there's inputs everywhere that everyone has on that. You know, I try to keep it simple. I look at very young children, like, maybe you've got, it sounds like kids that aren't yet in formal school. What I see from children, say, three-year-old, is this incredible innate drive to make meaning of their world, to learn. I can remember, in fact, I've got videos of it on my phone, and my daughter looks at it, when she was playing peek-a-boo, you know, around a wall in the house and just going back and forth, and how joyful those little experiences are. And I had a psychologist say, "Oh, that's about the brain developing object permanence." When a human being doesn't see the object, it still exists, and that's what they're testing. I was like, wow, I never knew that. So I see that innate joy in young children, and I see that as I watch kindergartners, they'll come in and there's a bounce in their step, literally. In fact, my daughter today, who's 11, she still will bounce in place up and down when she's really engaged or excited about something. And she says, "Oh, other kids kind of make fun of me," but I said, "Don't ever lose that, that is your thing." And, but what I also see is a system where sometimes we, the system does tamp down that bounce, that I think's in all human beings. And so what I look for is to say, what are those things? What are those barriers? Because I believe the potential of people is so much greater than what we realize. And so how do we, how do we have a system that passes on the best of what we know about our experience as human beings to the next generation and so that they can push it forward in that regard? And so I kind of have that big picture thing, and then it's looking at all of these other pieces on that. I do think we, and I think about this a lot, of why we've gotten to a spot where we're having a harder time coming to agreement on some basic things. My personal belief is, it's a lot to do with this and the algorithms that move information to us here, but move different information to Suzanne or Maggie or somebody else on that. And so I do believe we have to do more learning around that and how we can, I firmly believe there's so much more that unites all of us, and you've talked about that. I think all parents, all families want the very best for their kids. They want their kids to be happy, they want their kids to attain the knowledge and skills and the things that they need to live happy, good lives. And I believe people are inherently good. And part of, as I've been looking at things more recently, is we've got to re-ground ourselves in those things, because kids are watching. I have a student advisory council, and kids are saying there, "We don't understand what all you adults are yelling about. We don't get that." And so they're watching, they're paying attention, and we've got to work our way through. What I do know is that regardless of what people are disagreeing about, the reason they're bringing the passion is because they want the best for their kids. And so we've got to figure out how to do that as well.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I guess there's, I mean, I have 100 questions that I would ask, and I'm aware that there's 100 things that I don't know that I don't know probably at this point. But I suppose, I mean, I know it's been a very, I'm sure, a long week for you guys and a long night yet ahead, and I'd love to yield an extra minute or two back to you if you needed it. So I guess I would just, would close perhaps by saying I anticipate that I have a steep learning curve ahead, and I really enjoy that challenge, and I am more than willing to meet that challenge. That's what I do in most aspects of my life when they're new and when I'm behind or when I'm the one, you know, who needs to get up to par, and I would very much look forward to that. And the only other thing I really look forward to saying to you all here is to express my gratitude for everything that you have all done the last couple of years in the face of a lot of adversity or dissenting opinion or whatever. I believe wholeheartedly that everything was done with the safety of my kids and all of the kids in mind. There's no doubt things that we have to pick up now and the learning loss and then things that are being addressed, but, you know, following the experts and doing your best in an incredibly unprecedented set of circumstances, I thank you personally for that. And regardless of outcome here, you certainly got my support and family support throughout, and I just thank you very much for the work that you guys do for my kids and for all of our kids.
Great. Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you very much. It's an honor to be here.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good night.
I saw some students do a really great job on a class discussion, and I told them, "Oh, wow, you're doing a master's course, this is really great, I've got to say." And then, of course, the other little student points up and says, "So do we get extra credit?" And I said, "No, you don't get extra credit, you're doing all you need to do." But what I want to say is that...
What you did was good.
Yes, what you did was great, and they're like, "What if we impressed you so much?" I said, "What I love is that I feel like you are where you need to be now." Because they know, they've heard all year long, that they really, you know, we have to back up, we have to...
I remember you talking about that just a couple of months ago, going, "They are not where they need to be."
Yes, and now we are where I want them to be.
Right, right.
However, I have changed the plan to teach them how to make flashcards. As it turns out, my freshmen don't even know what it is. A couple of you? But, yeah, that's a change in the plan, so we can basic skill on how to study. Don't they have Quizlet? Well, that's the problem, because some of them, like, doesn't think, is when they, like, well, they come to Quizlet, they'll say, "I'll make it, everyone can use it."
Make your own. Go ahead.
I'm so sorry, Jackie, I didn't realize.
Oh, no, that's okay. I'm not sure in the world of COVID do I just say hello from here and not shake a hand?
Shaking hands, so you don't lie. Nice to see you, Jackie.
I like the honor of a handshake.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, it's Mia.
Nice to meet you.
All right, well, thank you for coming in today. This is the highlight of our week. We're getting to meet with a lot of eager volunteers in the community, so I'm looking forward to getting to know you a little bit. My name's Suzanne Callahan, and we're all going to be asking a few questions today, and then at the end we'll make sure there's time for you to ask some questions of us.
Great.
All right, so why don't we go ahead and start out? Tell us a little bit about your personal background and experience involvement in the school and the community.
Yeah, good. Okay, so I'm going to have to get used to this, not my usual way of communicating.
We don't do this all the time either.
Yeah, yeah. So I've been in business for 30-plus years, and marketing is my area of expertise. And as I've done marketing, I've really done it in a general management sort of way. And so I'd say I've got some pretty good competencies in finance, operations, and of course, marketing. So I was in the corporate world for, as I said, 30-plus years, and I was, as I was helping my sons look at colleges, I thought, you know, this would be so fun to be in a college environment, and the thought occurred to me to teach, because developing people was always my favorite aspect of my life in the corporate world. And the other thing I would say is that I have since a little girl understood the importance of a good education. And I saw through my own experience how education changed my life. And so I've always had this real passion for education and a very strong belief that education can change a life, to the point where, you know, not only did I make the decision to teach it at the college level, but my husband and I also have a small business in town, Premier Martial Arts, which is a business that incorporates martial arts in a way that develops kids to help empower them. And so it builds confidence, it builds focus, it builds all kinds of life skills, and it does that through martial arts, coupling the skills part of martial arts with a character development program that includes a match-up with the instructor where they talk about kindness and they talk about concentration and all these skills that are just general life skills. About, let's see, nine years ago or so, I joined a board called Early Learning Neighborhood Collaborative. This board is one that helps establish preschool slots for children from vulnerable neighborhoods. And so, of course, in Grand Rapids, we have a huge challenge with, you know, kids who don't have access to preschool. And so I joined this organization pretty early on, and I was a board member for a couple of years, worked on the communications committee, then became the vice president of that board, and then was the president of that board. And so that gave me some good experience in being on a board and understanding how to engage effectively as a board member, which is obviously different than if you're with the organization itself.
Good, thank you. We'll have plenty more questions, yeah.
And I need to go next with the question. What would you say is the primary reason for your interest in serving on the Board of Education?
So my love for education. I mean, you asked for primary, so I guess it's my love for education.
You can expand.
Yeah, of course. So I talked about my board service on Early Learning Neighborhood Collaborative. I did that for the six years as I talked about, and I stopped doing that in 2019 when my term was over. Around that time is when I started teaching at Hope College, and we started with our new business, and things were pretty crazy, and crazy in a good way. And so now my life is at the point where things have settled down a little bit, and I'm at a good point to engage in board service again. I want very much to do that. My community is really important to me, service is really important to me. I believe that if we all served, this community would be an awesome place, which it is, but it would be, you know, even more improved. And so I want to serve, do board service, and I want to do something in education. And I guess I would end by saying that we love Forest Hills. Three of our boys grew up in the Forest Hills School District. We have many, many, many memories, too many to say, fond memories of favorite teachers, of music activities, we've spent countless hours in this building. We've spent countless hours in this building, sports teams, I mean, too many to mention with three boys. And so, the opportunity to be able to serve in this capacity on this board is something that I'm really excited about.
Great. And as a little bit of a follow-up, if you were to be appointed to this vacancy, would you intend to run for either the two-year or the six-year term in November?
I filed today.
Okay.
I would, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Jackie, it's my turn, and I have the traditional question. What is the main strength you could bring to our Board of Education?
I'd say the main strength would be decision-making. So over the course of my business career, obviously, decision-making has been an important part of that. And so, over the years, I've developed the ability to take a really complex issue and boil it down into the essence of what the, you know, what the solution could be. I always, with my decision-making, seek to focus on how do we move forward? How do we progress? How do we improve the situation? Even when faced with a problem, it doesn't mean that it's going to be a negative solution. Sometimes there can be a real positive way to solve that problem in a way that helps in other ways. And so, I would say decision-making would probably be the top skill that I could bring.
Yeah. Hi, Jackie.
Hi, Maggie.
What do you believe is the major challenge facing our district, and how would you address it?
I would say right now the major challenge is trust, issues with trust. I think that there are real challenges with the relationship between parents and the district. I think there are a lot of concerns that include curriculum and issues associated with the curriculum. There's challenges with things like busing. And I think that, you know, I come from a world where it's hard to get things done when there's a lack of trust. It's hard to progress things. It's hard to make things happen. And I think that that challenge has made it very difficult here, and it's one that I have the ability to help with in that the way I choose to work is in a very relationship-oriented manner, and one where I seek to understand the different concerns, the different perspectives on the challenge, and take that into account as I'm going through the process of trying to figure out what the solution is. So I would say that, you know, right now, that is what I would see as the key challenge. Hopefully, that won't be a challenge for too long, but that's what I see it as today.
Thank you.
And of course, it's my question next.
As I am busily jotting notes on that one. My brain is still wanting to go back. So my question is, what is your understanding of the role and purpose of a board member?
Yeah, yeah. So, and I can go back on my previous experience as a board member and maybe show you the, kind of, the similarities between what I understand about this situation and my last board service. But when I was on the board for ELNC, we had a person heading up that organization who was the executive director. She was responsible for the operations of that organization. And so, it was her responsibility to lead that organization and execute the plans of that organization. My responsibility as a board member was to support those things that were going well, and there were many, many things that were going well, and to provide governance and accountability at times where that was needed. But what it was not, and what I understand about this board service, and please tell me if I am misunderstanding, but it was not, you know, the operations itself. It was really the oversight, and that was the role.
Thank you. All right, so I have a scenario-based question for you. So you're in the grocery store.
Yeah.
Okay, so could you describe how you would handle it if a parent cornered you in the grocery store and wanted you to take their side on an issue where they have some concern or problem?
So, great question. So I would listen, and I would really seek to understand what that perspective was. I would understand that I am a member of the board, and I'm not, I don't have the authority to provide a, an answer on, you know, what is the solution with it, or I would express my, the fact that I have heard the comment, and I would leave it at that. I would not make a commitment to do anything, because it would not be my place, because I am one person on a board. But I would make sure that I understood what that perspective was, and I would bring that back to the board.
Great, thank you.
Now it's my turn to be busily jotting down notes, and it's time to ask a question. If there were an issue on which you held a particular opinion or perspective that was not shared by fellow board members, how would you proceed?
Well, I, again, being a believer that diverse perspectives only make us better, I would look for a way to share that perspective, but the way that perspective is shared is really, really critical. And so, the way I would look to share it is in a very respectful way, seeking to understand the other perspectives and addressing those perspectives in my perspective. And I would be looking to offer it as a consideration and a way to improve the situation. What I would not do is I would not demean, I would not criticize, I would not get angry. I, you know, I've learned over the course of my career that managing your emotions is really important, and you're going to get a lot more done when you do it in a way that is very respectful and very productive, I guess.
Okay, I know the boys have graduated, and you are dabbling in new endeavors, but can you reflect back or even current day? Are there any areas in Forest Hills personally, or specific areas that you take an interest in, from an educational perspective, extracurricular?
Yeah.
Anything else?
We were a huge sports family, so I love sports, and a huge music family. Love music. I still have a son who just recently won a competition at Hope College. So just a real huge fan of that. And, you know, we've had teachers at Forest Hills who have, I don't know how to say this, but they have seen something in our boys that maybe others had missed, and we have huge gratitude for those teachers who gave our boys gifts that are, you know, are not, I don't even know how to describe it. So we just, we came away from Forest Hills with many, many positive memories, and I'm pretty flexible in terms of my engagement, but those are the areas that we were particularly interested in.
Great.
All right. What is your vision for the district, and how do you think that we can better serve our students and our families?
Yeah. So, all right, so my vision for the district is that kids are able to flourish and achieve what is their potential. And I think that this is best done with the support of the parents, with the support of the community, but at the end of the day, it's about the kids and doing what is best for the kids.
No, I want to get those words down. Just two more words. Okay. All right, thanks, Jackie. The Michigan Association of School Boards offers professional learning for all of us board members, and what are your thoughts regarding board professional learning? And would you be available to commit to taking advantage of this valuable training?
Yeah, I love it. I, you know, I would consider myself to be a lifelong learner. You know, I'm at Hope College at a time where, you know, I could be doing something else, and so I love that learning environment. I definitely would be very, very entrusted in committing time to that. My, so my situation is I teach two days at Hope. Right now, I teach Tuesdays and Thursdays, and what that does is that allows me to, you know, it's a pretty significant commute for me, so being there those two days, I kind of load up on those two days, teach all day, and then have Monday, Wednesday, and Friday where I don't teach. You know, if there's training that needs to happen on a Monday, Tuesday sort of thing, then, you know, I can change my class schedule with some notice, so I still have that flexibility. But yeah, you can understand the commitment to teaching on certain days, and so I do have that.
Excellent. All right, so is there anything else you would like to tell us about why you would like to serve on the board, or anything we haven't covered so far?
That's a great question. I think you all covered it. I just really, I feel like this is what I'm supposed to be doing, and I, there's no question in my mind, actually. And so, I would be honored if you gave me that opportunity, and yeah, I think I've talked about the experience that I can bring and would hope to be your choice.
Fantastic. So questions for us, as a board, as individuals, wherever you want to go? Just fire away.
Yeah, good. So, all right, so you had asked me about, you know, the vision for the district, and I'd love to hear maybe a few perspectives from you all on that.
Sure. I'm going to, I'm going to mix it up, because I was going to Mary before. I'm going to start with Maggie this time. I want to keep everybody on the edge of their seat.
What if I say something totally different?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
I would say the vision for the district, and Dan has said this a couple of times, and so has Suzanne tonight, this idea, we call it 21st century learning. That's kind of a buzzword right now. But really, when you boil that down, I think it's making sure that every kid in the district has an opportunity to do something that taps in to what gets them going and makes them excited about staying in school and education and realizing their full potential. And I think that when we talk about that, in terms of 21st century learning, it's putting into practice those skills that they're going to need beyond K-12 education, that sometimes don't always get the focus and the attention that they need in a, in a traditional classroom setting, but that collaboration really can highlight that and make that a stronger skillset for them.
Great.
Oh, yeah, okay. Didn't know you were doing a round robin, or what? Yeah, I, the vision of this whole, you know, I'm not always a big fan of buzzwords, but the whole 21st century learning. But it really is the idea, and I do truly believe that this is important, what Maggie was saying, of making sure we're reaching each kid, whichever way it is, you know, like, some kids love to sit in a class and take notes, and they are going to ask their questions, and they're going to get their information that way. Other kids will just walk out the door if given the chance, and it's better for them to be hands-on, like, having lots of different ways to engage in the materials for the different types of kids that are out there. I think that's really important, and I think that that's, I mean, and that is sort of the vision, that's what we want to do. I think there are still many things that need to be done to push us further along that path. So that's part of the reason why I'm here, is I want to make sure that we're not just going, "Oh, yeah, we've done a few good things, and I think we're, yeah, we're good, let's relax now." There's always something more that can be done, because there are just so many fantastic ideas. The teachers have amazing ideas of what they can do. Parents have ideas of what can be done. Students themselves have fantastic ideas that we might not ever think of, and I think it's so important to listen to all of those voices and move education forward in a way that hits everybody.
Yeah.
The thing I will add on that came out to me when you were talking before, when you were talking about, one of the favorite parts of your career was developing people. And I think what, you said that aligning with some of the things that Maggie was saying is we're, what excites us, or the vision of the district, is to create an environment where students are prepared for that, because they're still going to be developing after they leave here. And each one of them needs to have that skill in there. So I think that that's sort of that shared vision. We bring it from all of our different professional and personal backgrounds from our kids that have been here. So I think that's where we are. I will let you guys add on too, but I want to make sure you have a chance to ask any other questions, and then maybe there's some other thoughts that they would like to bring. Other questions?
My only other question is, I'd love your take on the challenges. The same question that you asked me about, you know...
Oh, I'm going to start with Mary Vonck, because she's been here before, during, and after challenges, so we'll start with you first.
The frame of mind of the first question, so hold on a minute.
Right.
No, I have to regroup. I will tell you, we...
There's just so much to do, Jackie. I am embracing your answer. I do think we have lost some trust, but not by any actions that have happened in this community. It's a whole world where we have to re-acclimate and re-figure out how we got to this point and get back to where we used to be. That involves a lot of communication, so we're very excited. This board made it very clear to the superintendent that we needed some experts in that field who are sitting off to our right and doing an exceptional job, so we're hopeful the team will be able to go forward together and make sure this whole community can be aware of what's going on and find the information they want and act it on the way that serves their families and their kids best. That would probably be my, in a nutshell, answer to what challenges we face right now.
Great.
I would have said, and just essentially what she had said as well, interestingly enough, my perspective of being within a school at this time and seeing the same, not exactly the same, but really the same kinds of challenges in a district adjacent to this one, and feeling like the community, of course, is feeling like this is, this is our problem, but it is a bigger problem that extends across the state and the country. It's the trust issues that you rose, you raised before, and that is a whole large thing to deal with. And so then, when we have additional challenges, like with busing currently, or the requests for more communication, and attempting to get those requests met at the time, in a timely fashion, that's the challenges, because that's, will bring, people will feel like they can trust more if their needs are met, but we are also simultaneously struggling to meet those needs. So that, I feel, is the challenges right now.
Any other questions for us while we're here?
No, I would just say, though, that I do have a lot of communication experience because of my marketing background. So, you know, I've had PR teams reporting into me, I've had communications teams reporting into me, so that's experience that I can bring to this board as well.
Wonderful. All right. Well, thank you for coming in, and we really appreciate learning a little bit more about you.
Thank you, I appreciate everybody's time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Very good. Make yourself comfortable. All right, glad you are here. I'm Suzanne Callahan.
Nice to meet you.
And we are very glad to spend a little bit of time with you today. We are going to ask a few questions, and then we'll make sure there's time for you to ask questions of us at the end. So why don't we go ahead and get started? Tell us a little bit about your personal background in, and experience and involvement in the schools and the community.
Just in the community or schools?
Schools and community, yeah.
Sure. I'll back it way up. I am the son of a principal and an elementary teacher. So I grew up with a kitchen table, talking about teaching, learning, educational leadership, families, students, all that stuff. Even as a teen, I, if you know what Boys State is and Girls State, the American Legion program, when I was 16, I went off to MSU with my American Legion scholarship. I ran for the school, the State Board of Education, and I won a seat. So my first seat on a state school board, or a school board, was at 16 years old. Which is kind of funny, but it does show how long I've been interested in this type of work. Kind of moving on through the years, student representative on a school board committee in high school. During my college years, I worked with my back-home superintendent on a thesis project about strategic planning in educational leadership, undergrad concentration in public service, first master's in teaching and learning, second master's in business administration with a concentration in social entrepreneurship with a focus on education. I've been a classroom teacher, public, private, urban, suburban schools. I was a external partner for the Chicago Public Schools. Probably spent time in 200 to 300 schools in Chicago, working with teachers, principals, area instructional officers, regional superintendents, deputy superintendents. Even got to co-present to Arnie Duncan one time before he went off to Washington. That was fun. For the past 14 years, I have probably served the Grand Rapids Public Schools as an assessment specialist. And in that role, I tend to manage the large-scale assessments, everything from NWEA map, M-Step, College Board, large-scale surveys, the Kent ISD Student Perception Survey, Panorama Student Social Emotional Survey, Tripod Teacher Survey, Tripod Student Survey. I have designed and execute the student growth component of educatory valves from, for teachers, for administrators, and for the superintendent. I have been at this table presenting to our academic achievement committee more times than I can count. I have been able to work intimately on the superintendency valve process behind closed doors. So I am familiar with that process and that rubric. I'm a board member on the Michigan Educational Research Association. I provide a direct testimony to, testimony to the State of Michigan House Education Committee. I have, on a couple of occasions. I have met with the Senate Education Chairperson for some conversations. On a more local note, I spend a lot of time in the building next door to us for a few months every year. About three years ago, my seventh-grade daughter was at a, I'm sorry, she signed up for the middle school swim and dive team. Went to the parent meeting. Six days before the season, the coordinator announced that the coach quit that morning. Six days later, they asked me to take the reins. And after a 20-year hiatus in doing that work, I've done it for the past three years. I get to work with about 50 fun, funny, dancing, committed, hard-working 12- and 13-year-olds. It is grueling, exhausting work, and I love every minute of it. And equally, I have thoroughly enjoyed getting to know about 150 families in the community through that work also. So life works in mysterious ways. My wife and I are proud parents of a couple of 14-year-old twin daughters at Forest Hills Northern. They're, they have worked their way through the Spanish immersion program. I have volunteered countless hours during their years at Edavista, Northern Trails, in-school programs, out-of-school programs, overnight programs. We've been very involved with Odyssey of the Mind, and I know a few of you have background in that. We are off to Iowa State in May for the third time in five years, I believe. Involved in swimming, diving, rowing. Spent some volunteer time over at Mackenzie's Animal Sanctuary in Lake Odessa. It's not really our community, but it's community. So that's a lot. Let me catch my breath and.
Well, there's more questions.
Yeah, we've got plenty more questions. What would you say is the primary reason for your interest in serving on the Board of Education?
So last week, the School News Network e-newsletter had an article about a young woman from Kentwood and how she's able to introduce Governor Whitmer at a, at a function. And the title of the article was "Luck is the Intersection Between Preparation and Opportunity." And two cornerstones for my life have been service and education, really for my entire life, in a variety of different fashions. And while this has been a very fast process for, for all of us and unexpected, in a way, I have been preparing for this type of responsibility for my entire life in terms of the breadth and depth of my experiences. And I'm here to serve. I didn't come here with an axe to grind. I don't have an agenda. I come from a posture of neutrality. And that's, that's why I'm here.
Okay. And as a little bit of a follow-up, if you were to be appointed to this vacant seat, do you intend to run in the 2022 election for either the two- or six-year term?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Steve, it's my turn. The typical question, what is the main strength you could bring to our board?
The main strength would probably be, there's probably a couple. I would say breadth and depth of experience, including working with a board already for several years. And more, of course, in a support role, in the same way that Dan might ask any member of his team to provide you with subject matter detail. That's kind of my role, too. Depth of knowledge in educational metrics and data systems. Anything from achievement, growth, social, emotional. I don't do any work on the financial side. I've taken a few accounting, finance classes during my MBA years, but haven't put those to practical application professionally. Yeah, really, probably just data systems and a comfort with that.
Hi, Steve.
Hi.
What do you believe is the major challenge facing our district, and how would you address it?
Our, this district?
Our district, yeah.
Just one?
Just one. You can do maybe two.
So thinking out loud is a short list. Mental health, safety and security, equity and funding, the challenge between meeting the letter of the law and implementing it for our scholars, staff, and families. I think probably the most pressing one, though, is staffing. And when I refer to staffing, this is not a COVID-related issue. This is not a two-year issue. This, this staffing shortage, at least in the classroom, has been happening for a long time. For example, Western Michigan University's, their undergrad enrollment, their undergrad enrollment in their education program from 1920 going back to 19, to 2010, it was 40% less. It was 40% of what it was. So that pipeline was already shrinking. And districts were scrambling to, to hire talent, rigorous talent, for the classroom. And that's not just us, that's everybody. Certainly, here, we can talk about busing, we can talk about operations, we could talk about maintenance, we can talk about subs. We can even talk about administrators. We can even talk about the superintendent pipeline and how that's not quite the same as it was a decade or so ago. Even that candidate pool is smaller, and there are often candidates that don't have prior experience in a superintendent's seat. They're often central officer principals trying to move up. And while historically they may have moved up to a smaller district, now because of the statewide pool, they're viable in mid-sized districts as well. By the way, I do have exposure to that process a couple of times over the past 10 years. So if you ever decide to go to Lansing and follow Dr. Rice, I have some experience in that, in that process as well. Couple suggestions, I'll give one micro and one macro. On a micro level, I was actually just having this conversation with your assistant super HR about hiring. Thinking about the immersion programs. And one suggestion might be, go overseas and recruit. My employer just recently came back from a recruiting trip to Puerto Rico to recruit and hopefully retain native language speakers. We have a dual-language program. We have several schools that have native language classrooms. You can ask your principal about that. Two of them. It's all fun and games. And so that's one approach. Another thought I had is, you might recall Oxford's been the news in the recent past. Oxford is also the only K-12 IB district in the state. They have a full immersion Spanish and Chinese program. They have sister cities globally in China and in Spanish-speaking countries. They go to their sister cities, and they recruit. They recruit native speakers who have training in teaching and learning. They bring them back to Oxford Community Schools, give them a two-year contract, provide some housing, some other incentives. And then that way, the kids in those programs are constantly be exposed to native-speaking instructors. On a macro level, I will share that on the, I'm on the board of the MIRA Education, MIRA, Michigan Educational Research Association. As part of our work, we offer, we provide conferences every two, every six months, twice a year. Traditionally, our conferences have a theme that anchor on the academic side of the house, the intersection of research, assessment, accountability, and teaching and learning. But next month, we're going to stray away from that. And our conference theme is actually "Education and the Labor Shortage." So we're going to have a couple of local voices kick off the event, and then we're going to move on. Because it's virtual this year, we have the opportunity to recruit some, not just statewide, but national and international speakers also. So that would be an opportunity, should this appointment happen to occur, where I could listen and participate in that event specifically with a lens or an ear for what could be brought back and actually executed this spring quickly before the spring hiring season passes to assist the district in their recruitment and retention efforts.
Steve, you've already expressed that you have a lot of experience with this. But please clarify once again for us, what is your understanding of the purpose and role of a board member?
Sure. Of a, I'll start with the board, and I'll go to member. So the way I understand it, the purpose of the board, the board generally has two core responsibilities, to review and revise policy and to hire, evaluate, and/or fire the superintendent. And that's it. There's only really two domains. Everything else that the board does flows from those two. And that includes, you mentioned, or you mentioned, I'm aware of, there's a curriculum committee and a finance committee. So that work flows from those first two domains. And so that's kind of how I view the board and their work. It also seems unfortunate that the public perception and public comment is often, or too often unfortunately focused on, really concerns or issues that are beyond the purview, the scope of the work of this body. And really, they're probably more appropriately directed towards administrators and not this body. So my sympathies to you. As for the role of the board member, I'm thinking of, what have we all been hearing in the news this week? The, the Supreme Court nominee and that entire process. This seat and those seats, right? And so she talks about coming from a position of neutrality. And she hears the evidence from both sides. And she tries to keep a clean slate in that process. And so I would think that as a board member, you have a very similar role. In a sense, you are like a set of justices. And you weigh the information, while you, as board members, may have policy in the back of your head, and a judge may have laws in the back of his or her head, you're still addressing very important topics that have risen, already been vetted through others to reach your table. And then they're presented, perhaps by one, perhaps by different opposing views, but it's your job to then listen, collaborate. And in that collaboration process, you're thinking about, you're respecting the views of each of you. You each have your own lens, right? It's like the six blind men and the elephant. And they each have their own concept of what they're touching and feeling based upon their prior knowledge and experience. But not until they talk and trust and collaborate do they understand the truth. And through your listening and through your collaboration, you can then land on a resolution or a compromise for that issue.
Thank you. All right. So now I have a little scenario for you. You're at the grocery store. Ready? Okay, so describe your response to a parent who corners you in the grocery store with a problem or concern, and they want you to take their side in the issue. How would you approach that as a board member?
Well, I think the, without having a specific scenario, I think the first one would be, is this a board issue or is this an administrative issue? Who, who really owns this issue? Or maybe not owns it, but who's the appropriate, what is the appropriate channel to address this? If it is a board issue, then perhaps public comment. Or perhaps it's channeled through the administrative channels, and then Dan would then bring it to the board. Or perhaps even through one of the committee meetings. I mean, depending upon what it is, maybe you encourage them to voice that concern at finance or at curriculum. And then those, those individuals on this body that sit on, in those seats that have more background might be able to better either address it, or raise it, or investigate it.
Okay, thanks.
And if there were an issue on which you held, held a particular opinion or a perspective that was not shared by fellow board members, how would you proceed?
Ideally, questioning. I'm kind of thinking back to that six blind men and the elephant scenario. Certainly, I can describe the tusk that I'm touching, but I also want to hear each of your views or lenses on that topic also. Perhaps there's other external information, data, research, testimony from other people that might be more knowledgeable on that topic that either I could share to help persuade you, or that you would share to help persuade me. If there's going to be a compromise, there probably needs to be an understanding about what are the parameters of the issue? What's inbounds and out-ofbounds? Within the issue, are there various components that might take a higher priority or precedence? Can we find some agreement on those high-priority areas? And then we arm wrestle.
Steve, back to me. You already shared with us your unexpected stint of three years hanging out with the swimming and diving kids. But are there any other areas extracurricularly or educationally in the district where you have a specific or personal interest or involvement?
Beyond those kids in that building?
Or if you want to elaborate on that, however you'd like to handle the question.
I have definitely warmed up to Odyssey of the Mind. And kudos to those of you here, and to Marty as well, for a huge contribution to that program. You know what, since you opened the, I will go ahead and dip my toe in that pool.
Please.
We have a nice facility next door. But in my opinion, relative to our peers, that are of equal size and wealth, our facility doesn't quite stand up to those, to those peers with that profile. And so I think it'd be great if we could, after 32 years, revisit that topic and maybe do an exploratory study.
All right.
Didn't expect that one.
What is your vision for the district? And how can we better serve our students and families?
Nice job rolling two into one. What is the vision for the district? Well, clearly, we are one of the premier districts, certainly on this, in West Michigan, but also statewide. But I think what I But I think what I would like to see is more context around how we look at ourselves compared to our peers. And what I really mean by that is, what peers? We can talk about rankings all day long, but we also, I think, all understand that there's a pretty tight correlation between a community's SCS status and the achievement of that, of the district, and how that's reported publicly. Over the past decade, this district typically ranks between the fifth and eighth statewide out of 516 districts in median family income. East is just a couple notches ahead of us, but overwhelmingly, we all know kind of the same peers in the top 10 on the other side of the state. So I think it's, it would be appropriate, as we think about our growth and our vision, it's growing relative to them. Speaking of growth, I think it's important that we look at student growth and not achievement so that we can celebrate progress for all of our students, regardless of where they are on the achievement continuum, and celebrate exceptional growth for those that might not be the highest achievement performers. I think growth percentile is a better way to look at students. At least it's more fair to those that aren't, are not always at the top. I'm sorry, Maggie, what was the second question?
Yeah. How do you think we can better serve our families and our students?
I hear that in the context of all, but I'm thinking of in the context of those that need the most support. I'm thinking of equity over equality. I'm thinking of the cost per student and how the cost is not the same for all students. Some students have needs and supports that require more. And I think we need to ensure that those students, families, programs, staff that have the greatest needs get what they need to be successful. And if that means not being equal in our distribution of resources, then still be it. Let's, I would rather err on the side of equity over equality.
So the Michigan Association of School Boards offers professional learning for all board members. What are your thoughts regarding board professional learning? And would you be able to, or available to commit time for that valuable training?
Do I think of it? I think it's critical. I think professional learning, regardless of who we are and what our roles are, at any step in this organization or beyond an organization, I think we all have room to grow personally and professionally. So any type of opportunity, I would wholeheartedly support. The second part was about availability, I believe. I am cautiously optimistic and confident that my employer, Dr. Roby, Dr. Gorman, would be very supportive of that, especially since they've been supportive of this process already.
All right. Thank you.
I can't speak for them, but I will cross my fingers.
Excellent. All right. So is there anything else that you would like to tell us regarding your desire to serve on the board?
I think just to emphasize two words or two kind of key pieces in that is that I look at my life as having certainly some cornerstones, as we all do, but two of which, for me, are service and education. And I think that this is that intersection of service and education with opportunity. It is, it is one of my languages. I'm not an extrovert, like I think most of you are, but I have always highly valued and tried to pursue service. Was there a second part to the question?
No. Well, the next, the next part is going to be, what questions do you have for us?
Okay. I will ask these, but I kind of ask them in a rhetorical sense. You don't, don't feel compelled to answer. But essentially, they are, how do you measure your progress? How do you know if you've moved the needle? If you have goals, how do you know if you're truly making progress towards them? What are your metrics? Are those metrics defined upfront based upon available data and the goals? And are you checking on those over the course of time? To be quite candid with you, I know recently there was a report on the Section 98B educational goals. This is part of Public Act 148 from last summer, which is really a renewal of the Return to Learn law from August of 2020. Districts had to identify educational goals at the beginning of the year by September 15th for mid-year, for the end of the year. You can tell this is, I play in this space. And then report them out in aggregate by grade, by subgroup, blah, blah, blah. It's a compliance piece, but I think it's also an opportunity to be reflective as well. And this kind of ties back to an earlier piece where we have a tendency, and others like us, to report out on metrics that sound fantastic, and they truly are. Our kids, our staff, our administrators, our board does a fantastic job. And we are where we are because of decades and generations of highly committed people that came before us. We are on their shoulders. I recognize that. But I think it's also good to offer two sides, not just achievement status, but growth, or something along those lines. Because if we keep reporting about the percent of students that are proficient, or the percent of students that meet college and career readiness standards, or honestly, even some areas within SCL survey data that is tied to SES, most of the public does not recognize that part of that is buried in our SES, in the fact that the majority of the families in this district have resources in their homes and safety nets to provide for their kids. And whether that's health, whether it's opportunity, whether it's books on a bookshelf when the kid's a toddler, whether it's just the luxury and gift of time. Our families, and I'm stereotyping here, I recognize that, but I'm also thinking about our median income, and our education level, which is exceptional as well, and the profile of our students as a population. And think about the population that I serve with my employer. There are other ways, more transparent ways to reflect on our kids and the extent to which they're growing, or achieving, or not.
Any other questions you would have for the board?
No, I think I hit that. Meaning, just how do you measure? How do you evaluate? Speaking of, and on that note, I guess a follow-up might be, not for here, but just to reflect, is, do you evaluate? Do you evaluate your programs? And if so, how? Is it internal? Is it external? Not looking for an answer. It's just rhetorical for reflection.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you so much for coming in today. We really enjoyed getting to know you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you for your work and your service.
Let's move into an official recess. Didn't feel cavalry.
I think we've worn people down.
They'll find their way.
Yeah, they'll find their way. It's all about you. It's all about you.
May I drink this?
You may.
Thank you.
You may.
And that was one of the things I noticed first about being a board member. Remember, Mary, how I said, I get all the water bottles?
We traveled to Africa a couple of years ago, and they were calling me the Water Princess, because I was always asking for water and picking it up.
All right. Well, here's how it's going to go. We are going to ask you a few questions. Everybody will ask you a question, and then at the end, there will be time for you to ask us questions as well. So why don't you go ahead and start out with some of your personal background and experience and involvement with our schools and the community? Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Thank, I wanted to thank you first, really, for taking the time to invite me to come back. It's really important to me, and I appreciate the consideration. So I've been part of the district for 19 years when we moved back here from Illinois. And I started volunteering before my son even entered kindergarten. So the teacher called me before and said, we need a room parent. And I was like, what is that? I guess I can do that, but I'm on my way to have a baby. So when I get back, well, so I've been doing it a long time. I started doing Room Mom, helping out in any way I can. The PTO Board at Meadowbrook, at Northern Trails, and part of the Hip Moms at Northern Middle School. Usually, I just try to find a way, any way I can help. But if there's a hole, I'll fill it, and I'm glad to work at that way. I have been part of the PAC this year, and that has been very informative to see what is being worked on, all the, a little bit of the inner workings and hear concerns from across the district. And I think that's helpful information. So I think that's.
So what would you say is your primary reason for your interest in serving on the Board of Education?
Because I care. That's the primary reason. I care about my children's education. I care about my neighbor's children's education. I care about the community's children's education. I care that we have safe schools. I care that we have vibrant schools. I care that we have schools that are functioning well, so that we can all learn, that every student can get to their potential.
Okay. And a follow-up to that is, if you were going to be appointed to this vacant seat, do you intend to run in the, in November for the two-year or the six-year term?
I do. I already applied, actually.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, Michelle, I have the typical easy question. What strengths could you bring to our board?
My primary strength, I think, is my experience in involvement in the community. I have a lot of ties in the community and a lot of experience. I think over this, in the volunteering, that's part of it, but also in this past year, I've been attending all the board meetings regularly, the curriculum meetings. And I think that has given me a lot of perspective of the landscape. I think I heard what our new DEE director has been doing updates at the curriculum meetings always. I can understand where she's going with that in some ways. You don't get everything there. And it, updates on the 21st century learning. I've heard about the math workshops. I've heard about English learning, just kind of the whole terrain, and also the ESF funds. And I realize the complexity of things, that we have a really complex system, and there's a lot of working parts, and a lot of very professional people who are able to do that well. So I think I bring in that experience. I've been involved, and I'm invested. I spent the time, and I'm willing to spend more time to understand and to do what needs to be done, really. Thank you.
All right. Michelle, what do you believe is the major challenge facing our district? And how would you address that?
Well, I think we've all seen that there's quite a bit of division and maybe a lack of trust. I think it's been a tumultuous couple of years, and I think that that might be a major challenge that we're facing. I think that we would do well to face it head-on. I think we need to have some honest and direct conversations. I think we need to make sure all voices are heard and considered, and then look for common ground. I think, I'm very committed to the public part of public schools, that we have everyone involved, and that everyone can be here and everyone can learn.
So, Michelle, what is your understanding of the role and purpose of being a board member?
I think primarily, we have to be focused on students' education and being educated. That's the first and foremost. But also, I understand that role of board members is to know the vision and also be able to know the policies and bylaws and be able to keep them enacted so that we can affect the vision and teach, be able to teach students.
Thank you. All right. I have a scenario for you, okay? You're at the grocery store. Describe your response if a parent corners you at the grocery store with a problem or a concern, and they want you to take their side on it. How will you respond?
I think I would start with listening. I think everyone wants to be heard, and everyone deserves to be heard. So I would listen, but I would be sure to, I understand that my role on the board, I wouldn't be able to take sides. I don't think it's productive to take sides. I think I would listen, understand, and be able to tell them that I'll take that back to the board for consideration, be sure that your voice is represented.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm taking notes. I didn't realize my turn was up here. If there were an issue on which you held a particular opinion or perspective, and it was not shared by your fellow board members, how would you proceed?
Again, I think I would be honest. I think you know me to be honest. I probably would say what my opinion is, but I also understand that you have to work together. So we have a vote. We'll have to go with what the group has decided. I think, though, we'll have better decisions when we're able to be honest with each other and to have really, yeah, I keep saying honest, that's too many, but I think that's the key. But I would go with what the board's decided together. We have to be collaborative, or we'll be stuck.
Your kids have been really involved, so would you like to focus on or share a little bit about areas in the district extracurricularly or educationally where you have a specific or personal interest?
I, yeah, my kids have been very involved, and I have four boys, so they've been very involved in sports. And I hope I'm not punished, but I'm not particularly interested in that, to be honest. If you ask me to do something with it, I will, but I'm, I don't really want to. I think, you know, recently, I've, I don't know a lot about it, but I've been hearing a number of my neighbors talk about special needs and IEPs, and I don't really understand that situation, but I would be interested in understanding more, because it seems like there's some glitches or difficulties, or maybe parents are having trouble navigating how to know how to care for their children and that. And in some ways, I'm speaking out of ignorance, because I don't know myself, but I think even when I've had concerns, I've taken time to read through our policies, through our bylaws, to find out who knows what. And I would be interested in that if I could learn. I'm also interested in the high school. It seems like we have a lot of focus on learning in the elementary schools, but I'm worried about some of the learning loss that's very subtle from COVID. I was just sharing about one of my sons who is in calculus, but somehow missed steps of Algebra II during COVID. So he can do the calculus, but not the Algebra II part always. So those kind of subtle learning losses of people who you might not know are not quite measuring up, I would be interested. I guess those are kind of cracky things that I'm interested in.
All right. So what do you, what would you say is your vision for the district? And how do you think we can better serve our students and families with that vision?
Well, I think part of our vision is our history, and I think that's a strength that I have. I've been here a long time, and our history has been excellence and a very good education. Our school district's known for that. So I'd like that to be our future also. I think my vision would be that we'd be able to serve all children, that there wouldn't be anybody falling through the cracks, that we would be able to pay attention to that. But also, I would like us to be able to focus on fundamentals, fundamentals while we're at the same time innovating and being prepared for the future. So by that, I mean, I'm thinking of an example, like horsepower. So cars have horsepower. And why do we say they have horsepower? Because horses used to drag that. So at some point, we had a fundamental idea of how things get moved through horses. And then we developed that into horsepower. And I don't know what future jobs are going to be. People are doing jobs that we don't know now, but we didn't know then. People are doing jobs that we don't know now, but we didn't know then. But I don't know what's in the future, so I think if we have strong fundamentals, kids will be able to adapt, be able to learn. But also, we have to be able to figure out a way of what we need now that's new and different. So I think balance is a good key. Not sure I wrapped that up. I'm sorry about that. Yeah. Yeah. A balance of innovation and sticking to tradition.
All right. The Michigan Association of School Boards offers professional learning for all board members. What are your thoughts regarding board professional learning, and would you be available to commit your time to such valuable training?
I would really want that. I think part of what's been clear to me of coming to all the meetings is, I really don't have all the answers. And there are a lot of people who do have been doing it a while, they have answers. It's not that I have no answers, but I don't have all the answers that I know I need to learn.
Thank you. All right. Is there anything else that you would like to tell us regarding why you would like to serve as a board member?
I think, well, you know, I've been around, so I think a strength and something that we need is, we need to be able to have sensitive conversations, and I think I've been having them. And I would, I think that I can collaborate on that, and we also need collaborations. So I think we're facing some difficulties. I think we've, I sat through the board meeting, we all sat, you know, but if we face them, I think that it could get better, and I'd like to be part of that. I'd like, if I can help, I would like to help that.
Excellent. All right. So now, what questions do you have for us?
Well, yeah, I was wondering what you see as the tasks that would be most at hand? What's the primary challenge and task for this period that I would be appointed to? Would you, oh, that's a good question.
So in the near term, like?
In this, yeah, in this nine, how many is it? Nine, didn't add up the months, till November.
Right. Okay. Yeah. I think that for you as an individual is being able to hit the ground running and get, you know, feel comfortable with all of the, some of those things about board service. You know, that would be an individual thing. As a group challenge, we're going to have significant change on who the board makeup is in November. So feeling like you would be included into some of the work that's happening now, and then feel comfortable, because we're going to have change happening in the November with the changing complexion of it. So I guess from an individual perspective, knowing, okay, you're coming in, you want to make sure you're up to speed, and then able to, you know, participate in the election. So that's more of like an individual thing. For us as a group, lots of, all the challenges that we hear about, you know, we've got the staff, you know, the challenges that are facing the district overall. I mean, I think our challenge is to talk about, the word you used, trust. I think we need to start telling all the good stories, all the amazing things that are happening in the district, and show the community that whether it's the seven of us or whoever is out there, that the district is continuing on, and we are balancing the fundamental core success history of the, of the district, and we're moving ahead so all the kids are having the skills they need for the future. So I think our challenge is to get back to telling all of the stories between now and November, or not really stopping in November, but we just need to be back, back to business, I guess, from that perspective. Not doing things the way we used to, but telling all the stories about how the district is going on. So that's, you know, I guess, kind of the individual thing. And then as a board, it's my relentless positivity. It's my Ted Lasso, right? It's, "We've got to go forward. We're going forward." So anybody else want to chime in on that?
I think you got that covered.
Okay. What other questions do you have?
Yeah. So before you answered, I had thinking, well, what would you see in a candidate would help get those tasks done? So what are you looking forward to balance out, what your strengths are on the board?
I will start with a couple of things, just to, when, when we met on Tuesday, I'm sorry, I'm getting, imagine that getting my days confused. So when we met on Tuesday, we worked through a rubric, and those were criteria for consideration when we were looking at people that said they were interested in the board. So this was not the end-all and be-all of, you know, this is the most important thing, but we were looking for a combination of, what's a compelling story? Does the person here feel like they have the passion and the story, the reason they want to serve on the board is, makes sense?
I should have asked this question first.
Yeah. That they, that they have this reason. Secondly, is there evidence of involvement in our schools? Do they know what's happening in our schools? Because if somebody's coming in, and I mean, to make decisions and be a part of this, we want to know that they know what's going on in the schools. The other thing that we were interested in looking at is any evidence of board service, understanding that there are pieces of this of, we're not running the schools, we're not in there on a daily basis, passing lunch trays out, and we're not the ones that are actually doing that. There is the operational piece, as well as the strategic oversight piece of it. So understanding what board service is, that makes it productive, but also a lot less frustrating, because if you think you're coming in, when we're all roll-up-your-sleeves people, that if you think you're coming in to roll up your sleeves and then go into the classroom, that could actually be frustrating. So we want to make sure they have an understanding of board service. So those were some of the criteria we looked at, and that wasn't the end-all and be-all, but those were, and then the final piece was, is there a skill set from the candidate that complements what we have already? Because we have a set of skills that is not with us on the board right now, so where do we fill in that gap? Where is this other person going to fill in, in the short term, between now and November, but also, hope this person's going to be around for two more years, or six more years, or whatever it turns out to be? That, how does that complement the complexion of the existing skill sets that's here? And knowing that there are other skills and history that are departing, you know, that are going to be departing, that how does this complement the skills that we'll be losing on the board? So those are the criteria that we use, and that will be through which the lens we look when we're making our decisions. Does that help?
Very. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess that, I think you answered that. I was going to ask about success. What would success look like for a candidate? But maybe you have something to add, but it sounded like that.
Let somebody else talk. I talk too much. What's, yeah, what's a successful, we'll start with you, Mary. Anything, what do you think is, you haven't said anything for a while. Yes, go ahead.
Shocking. You know, everything Suzanne talked about, we need a good board balance, we need people that are going to complement the talents and experiences and skill sets we already have. Man, I can't believe I'm going to say this. We need joy. I want people to be happy. I am a huge component of, proponent, excuse me, of service, but we've always talked about who's going to do what job, when, where, why, how, who should do what. I don't like the word should. What will give you joy? Certainly, it should be in conjunction with what you're equipped to do and capable to do and able to do, but I would hope board success means that the person that sits here says, "I belong here, and I feel satisfied, and I feel that I have purpose, and I feel that I'm making a difference." So to me, that would be a board member that has been chosen and is acting in a successful way.
Sounds very positive and hopeful.
Good.
We need that, too, right?
Always.
Yes. I can't help but say, Michelle, that I appreciate your questions, because I think it really does reflect your plans for the fall as well and running for the board position, that this is something that you want to know, how will you be successful, even if it's the run in the fall as well?
Thank you. I think that's it for now.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time, and thanks for taking.
Thank you for coming in, Michelle. Sorry. We need someone who knows how to use a microphone.
We need us.
Thankfully, it was turned on before I sat down.
And we also are a Big Forest Hills family, and you have a very exciting weekend coming up. So good luck to you and your future, your son and your future daughter-in-law.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Am I allowed to sit?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Nice to meet you, Daniel.
Nice to meet you, too. Okay.
Love the glasses, too. Very cool.
Thank you. So cheap glasses have changed my life. You can just go to, like, Zenni Optical and buy different glasses, and it's just become part of my, like, it's just like, I'll pay $15, I'm going to get a new pair of glasses. It's so great. So I could talk all night about Zenni Optical if you want to talk about that.
I was like, a whole fashionable line of glasses. I have a friend like that, and I just have the one.
Yeah.
But I'm kind of jealous. Yeah. Right.
Yeah. Don't think less of me. I have three pairs, and I.
Oh, only three? I was actually imagining, like, shoes in a closet, like, all the glasses lined up.
So shoes are a funny story, too, because usually I let my daughter pick out my shoes in the morning, but I decided to coordinate today. So I'll go to work with some interesting shoes on Sunday, but that's Piper's job at 7:30 in the morning.
Kind of feel bad that you have this awkward moment where you're sitting there.
Should we keep talking about Zenni? Does anybody know the score of the Michigan game?
So I agree more with, more with Michelle on that one. I'm not the do-not-care. That's not my thing.
Okay. Okay.
Well, then, let's go ahead and get started. I'm Suzanne. Glad to meet you. I'm looking forward to getting to know you with my colleagues here. What we're going to do is, we've got a set of questions that we will go through, and there will be ample time for you to ask us some questions at the end. So why don't we start out, just getting to know you a little bit? Let us know a little bit about your personal background and your experience in the school and community.
Yeah, absolutely. So personally, I'm from Grand Rapids. I was born southeast side of Grand Rapids, lived in the area for the first 24 years of my life, came up through Grand Rapids Christian schooling system, went to GRCC and did, you know, a whole lot of different things for a couple of years before deciding to move to Chicago, and moved there, went to school, graduated, ended up finding my wife. We got married, moved right out to Portland, Oregon, so spent a couple of years out there, had a great time, came back to Grand Rapids so that we could, my wife could go to school, and we kind of settled here, landed for a while, took a brief hiatus, moved out to Pennsylvania to live by my sister for a very brief amount of time, came back and set up roots in, we're technically in Kentwood. So we're in that weird, like, triangle where I'm Kentwood, but at Grand Rapids mailing address, and I'm in Forest Hills Public Schools. Takes a lot of explaining to tell people where I live. And nobody, when I'm doing my mail, trust me, when I say I'm in Kentwood, they're like, "No, you're Gregory's." Okay. Yeah. So that's, that's kind of the personal side. Professionally, after I graduated from college in Chicago, moved out to Portland and started a career in nonprofit, doing case management for adults with developmental disabilities. So it was an ATE program, an alternative to employment. So I worked with adults with developmental disabilities who were not employed. Interesting, though, during that time, Portland went to a workforce model, and we ended up transitioning all the individuals in our programming to employment first. When I moved back here, kind of did a reset, and my schooling background was in film and video production, so as any good nonprofit professional, what I went to school for has nothing to do with what I actually do for a career. But I did, I owned my own small business for a couple, about a year and a half, doing film and video production right when we moved back, as I tried to figure out what my next step was. Ended up doing a year of AmeriCorps service, which changed my life, got into the workforce development side of things at Goodwill, and then spent a number of years at Goodwill, doing, again, the nonprofit thing where I wore this hat for a year, and then a different hat for a year, did program management, worked with, started a collaboration within the community, worked in youth services, did a lot of different things, really enjoyed my time, ended up in HR right before I left, and then from there, took a position at First Steps Kent, which is where I am today. And First Steps, if you don't know, is the, they hold the early childhood village for Kent County. So I am a program manager. I was hired in to work specifically with childcare providers, but kind of run the gamut with early childhood, zero to five right now at First Steps, and I'm loving it. Let me think, oh, most importantly, I have two little girls. I have a, I have to always think, it's March now, and they're about to both flip over. So they are five and eight right now, about to be six and nine at Meadowbrook, and they are, yeah, we love it there. We, when we moved back from Pennsylvania, Forest Hills was an area that we definitely targeted. My daughter has an IEP, and we were looking for recommendations for good schools for students who have an IEP, and it has lived up to the expectations. So we really love where we landed at Meadowbrook. Outside of work, I like to stay busy, so I currently was actually just named the chairperson for the Kent County Community Action Advisory Governing Board, so working on poverty-related issues. I also am on the Steering Committee for the Essential Needs Task Force, again, kind of basic needs, and am a board member for United Church Outreach Ministry. So I've been there for a number of years as well. And yeah, I mean, never a dull moment, but I really like to stay busy. So I think that sums it up.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, that was a great introduction. You're a very busy person, and we're looking forward to getting to know you here.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
What is your primary reason for your interest in serving on the Board of Education?
Yeah, so it, it sounds like hyperbole, but Forest Hills and Meadowbrook have given us so much that I feel like it's kind of my duty to try to give back. This is not a role that I envisioned myself, you know, pursuing until, you know, a couple weeks ago when I saw that posting. But I have, I've, you know, Meadowbrook, Meadowbrook and Forest Hills have been so good to us so far. I want to see, I know this can be, you know, a tough time when there's changeover like that, so I think that I can come in and help be that stabilizing factor with the experience that I have. I didn't mention, I'm also the president of the Meadowbrook PTO right now. I've been three years on the PTO and took over as president this year. And it's, the PTO in no way, shape, or form is, you know, the same scope as the Board of Education, but it's kind of a microcosm. And I think a lot of the things that we're going through in the PTO right now really do translate well to the work that's being done kind of on the macro level, you know, supporting teachers, figuring out this, this new normal that we have, and how to, how to interact, and how to, how to go forward as we, you know, ease our way hopefully out of COVID, and what those next steps are. So again, it's just an area that I really want to invest my time and energy in.
Okay. And a little bit of a follow-up on that is, if you were to be appointed to this vacancy, would you have an intent to run in 2022 November?
At this point, I do not have that intention. I guess I was always told never to close the door on anything, but at this point, that's not my intention, is to run. I really would love to, you know, be able to come in and be that, you know, help stabilize right now as we look to kind of the next steps.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
My turn, Daniel.
Sure.
I have that typical easy question. What is the strength you could bring to our board?
So I am very organized and very strategic. I actually had a conversation with, today with somebody, and the, kind of my mantra is work smarter, not harder. So I really like processes. I really like putting in, you know, as a project manager, putting in frameworks, and I think with the experiences that I've had, you know, on the different, my different areas of service, the current. the current work I'm doing with the PTO, could really step in pretty quickly and, and help kind of be that stabilizing force. I, I got nominated and named the chairperson for the Community Action Advisory Governing Board and made to lead the meeting the first day that I, you know, that I was voted in. So it's one of those things where you kind of just roll with the punches, but I think that's kind of that, that calm that I can bring to the situation.
So, Daniel, what do you believe is the major challenge facing our district? And then how would you address it?
Sure. It seems kind of like low-hanging fruit, but the impact of COVID is just kind of that ever-present variable right now. You know, it has been a tough couple of years, and we've really been in survival mode for a while. So I think figuring out how to, how to exit survival mode and rebuild and look at what's next for the district is a huge, is a huge need, and to be strategic with that. And not to, I'm, I also talk a lot about not being reactive, but being proactive, so thinking ahead and what's the next step. And, you know, at work right now, at First Steps Kent, we're, we have a campaign called Normal Was Never Enough, and it really says, you know, we ended up in this situation, and it's not a good thing, but it gives us the moment to look back and say, you know, maybe that normal that we had before wasn't enough, and what can we do to design a better system going forward? So that's, that is the just big need, I think, that's out there, the elephant in the room. From kind of a smaller level, I do have a background in workforce development. I know that hiring, busing, teachers, being at Meadowbrook, Tim Shaw just announced his retirement, and that's probably not the end of this phenomenon that we're going to be seeing. It's going to be looking at how to bring people back into the workforce in some of these positions, how to recruit new folks, but that's, again, something I think we need to be very strategic about. Being in early, early care right now, we're seeing the effects of a pandemic on hiring. We can't staff childcare, we can't staff early care programs, and, you know, making sure that's not the same issue that we face in the district.
Oh, it is already on, I have not messed that up. All right, what is your understanding of the role and purpose of a board member? I mean, we know you do have experience with this.
And it's a great question, because I think even with having experience, every role is a little bit different. And, you know, I did, I did my good interview prep thing, kind of looked at the information that was available online, kind of reviewed the different things that I've been working on, and the breakdown, you know, was pretty straightforward, looking at the bylaws and policy, working with the superintendent, and the, the budget piece, seemed to be kind of the three key elements of the work the board does specifically, and highlighting that it's not day-to-day operations. I have definitely been in situations where the board is very involved in day-to-day operations, and it isn't always the best situation, so I think that's a great delineation. But, you know, those kind of three keystone areas, and the budgeting piece is one that I definitely have a background in. For, for UCOM, where I sit on that board, I am on the Finance Committee, and I, you know, I help write and approve the budget every year. Community action is a, you know, a multimillion-dollar entity, every year we help look at that. So that's an area of focus, you know, for myself personally, I think I could bring to the, to the board.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a scenario for you. You're at the grocery store, okay?
Yep.
Describe your response if a parent corners you at the grocery store, and they have a problem or a concern, and they want you to take their side on that issue.
So, as, just personally, I do Instacart, so this is tough for me to answer, but, um, so.
I wasn't expecting that.
That was a pandemic response from, you know, we started doing Instacart, but. So communication and collaboration are two of the key elements that have been a focus of my career. And to that end, a lot of people just like to be listened to. And I don't think taking that, you know, that couple of minutes out of your day to listen to those concerns, take that in, leadership isn't always having the right answers, a lot of times it's asking the right questions. So having that opportunity to, to hear those, hear what people have to say is, I think, in general, a good thing. Is there a limit to that? Yes, absolutely, and I'm sure in your roles, you know, being very public figures, you've probably seen that limit. So it's also being able to, you know, politely, you know, politely navigate that situation where you do the listening, but then also are able to kind of, you know, extricate yourself from the situation at the appropriate point. But I really, I do put a lot of, put a lot of emphasis on those conversations. As a complete aside, I think that's been one of the things that's been missing from our virtual world, is that accidental collaboration, where you see somebody and you have a conversation, and you learn something, listen to something that you hadn't thought of before, and that's an amazing opportunity.
Great, thank you. Well, I can say that we got to eat our Subway sandwiches out there tonight, and it was really nice to sit down and have dinner with somebody.
Yeah.
So I, I think that accidental collaboration is nice, thank you.
Yeah.
If there were an issue on which you held a particular opinion or perspective that was not shared by your fellow board members, how would you proceed?
So I tend to be a logical person, and to that end, I try to take emotion out of my decision-making process. It's not a hundred percent possible as a human being, but being able to communicate with somebody logically, I am not the type of person who, if somebody disagrees with me, I think that's necessarily a bad thing. I don't think I have all the right answers, I just want to have the right conversations. So being, you know, having a personality where I am going to listen to you, if we can reciprocate, that's what I'm looking for. And again, I'm not, you know, I'm not looking to always be right or always to get my way, I just, you know, I want that opportunity to have that conversation.
Okay, Daniel, do you have any specific or personal interest in any educational or extracurricular programs in Forest Hills?
No, I mean, so, besides being on the PTO and working for First Steps where we hold the early childhood village, those are really kind of the two direct connections, but I don't think it provides, it's a conflict in any way, so.
And it's not necessarily a conflict, are there things that.
Oh, sure, gotcha.
Feed your passion, you know, anything that you speak to or brought you to the table, got you involved in PTO, what has kind of paved your path on this journey?
I took that in a completely different direction, so. Trying to keep you on your toes. So my passion is in organizing, it's community organizing, and that is a wide umbrella, but I really think that we make the community that we want to live in, and you have to take an active role in that. There are a lot of things that go on this, in this world, on a national, on a worldwide level, but our community is our home, and we, to make the home that you want to see, you have to take an active role in that. And again, I'll sound like a broken record, I'm a project manager, I like to put pieces together, I like to put that puzzle together, and I know that's what I bring to the table. I also like to, yeah, when I was, again, kind of reviewing the, you know, mission, vision, principles things, I saw the word "community" a lot, "collaboration," that is, that is my mantra, that is my motto, is we need to do this as a community, and we need to put those parts together, because there are a lot of great people, doing a lot of great work out there. So being able to connect those dots, I think, is my passion, and my children are my life, and I want to do everything I can for them to make sure that they have, you know, they are in a situation where they can be successful and thrive.
All right, what is your vision for the district? And how do you think that we can better serve our students and families with that vision?
So I think my vision for the, for the district is being one, and not saying that it's not right now, but continuing to be one where there's, you know, parent voice, administration voice, with that North Star with children, where it is listening to the stakeholders. Again, with project manager, whenever you initiate a project, the first thing that you're going to do is make a stakeholder list, and you're going to see who you're going to affect by the work that you're doing, and you're going to decide how to engage those different stakeholders. So it's continuing to have that as a focus, a focus of the district going forward, and also going back to that being proactive versus reactive piece, so taking the lessons that we've learned over these past couple of years, and, you know, with tensions and whatever may have happened in the past, that's in the past. Let's take that information, let's work together, and, you know, build that strategic plan for what the, what the district can look like going forward.
Thank you.
So the Michigan Association of School Boards offers professional learning for all board members?
Great.
And so what are your thoughts regarding board professional learning? And would you be available to commit the time to the, to our valuable trainings?
I love that idea, professional development, that just goes, hits my workforce development soul. And so for UCOM, where I'm sitting on the board right now, that's one, one thing that we've developed and brought on for the UCOM board, which is really having those professional, professional development opportunities and bringing in learning opportunities to board meetings. So it, you know, it helps to build those skills, because it is an ever-changing system that we're living in here. And I, you know, I embody the idea of being a lifelong learner. So as those opportunities arise, that's definitely something that's kind of right in my wheelhouse. Yeah.
All right, so is there anything else you would like to tell us about why you'd like to serve as a board member?
I mean, I think you asked good questions, we covered a lot of it. Just kind of reiterating the piece, where this really does feel like, in a very positive way, a duty that I would love to do for the school district. I think the work that I've done previously, both professionally and, you know, outside of work, has prepared me to, you know, step in and quickly be able to kind of assimilate seamlessly. So, yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's really what drives me to do this, and, you know, everything that I have seen and heard, and, you know, this process that we're going through right now has been a great way to, you know, learn about the work that's being done, and really kind of have those conversations going forward.
Wonderful. All right, so now, any questions you have for us as a group or individuals?
So this is not to anybody specifically, but kind of going back to that stakeholder piece. Whenever I start a project, I will annoy you with this. If you hang out with me long enough, I will talk about dominos. So a lot of people, when they start to do something, they think about the first domino, and they push it. I like to think about what the last domino is. And that last, last domino to me is what does success look like? So if you design the system, what does it look like if it's successful? As I was kind of thinking through the stakeholders for the Board of Education, you know, children, parents, families, staff, seem to be, seem to be, you know, some of the standard stakeholders for that. So I guess my question, and this is to anybody, is for this role, for somebody to come in and be successful in this role, what does that look like?
For someone coming into the board?
To this specific role, yeah, like, if, if you were to look in the future to November and say, that was successful, what we just did there with this new person, what would that look like?
Okay, well, I would say the, first of all, one thing that would be successful is that individual actually enjoyed the time from now until November, because I do think that we're coming into a time of spring and fun and all these good things in the school, and celebrating, there was an opportunity to come in, and in that, in a relatively short amount of time, celebrate the successes and everybody getting back into what feels like a fun and spring that we used to know. So that would be the one thing I think would be success for that individual, and also for us to be able to experience that. I think success also for us is that, you were talking about a strategic plan and being proactive, and we've talked about this vision of where the district is going. We want all of our students to be able to achieve their individual potential and go forward, and then also address some of the gaps and things that have happened in the last two years. So hopefully, a new perspective, a new voice will be able to help us navigate that and, and support Dan in what he is trying to do with his team of a thousand staff members and ten thousand students, that give, give the latitude and the support and the encouragement to keep moving things forward, because that isn't very long between now and November, but that we, that we're setting the stage for that. And so that we're, we're going to have a loss on our board of a lot of experience and history, and I think that's what we need to make sure, I think the word momentum keeps coming to me. We need to have momentum going, so that when new board members come in in November, whether it's the person that's here from now until then, but the new board members that come in, and they can feel, okay, this is where we're going, and we're continuing forward progress, because I felt like there was a lot of time we were just in a holding pattern for two years. So I guess momentum is what I would like, a new board member to help, support, and then make other board members coming in in November feel that as well. So that's, that's kind of my feeling of November, momentum.
Fantastic, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yes.
I mean, there's definitely different challenges that are coming out of this that we might not have been to save before. The, you know, the social, emotional piece is going to be a huge element to what we're, what we're doing. Especially with children going, they're just reading articles about the number of children who aren't showing back up for school, so there's a lot of new challenges, so I, that momentum piece is key.
Yes. Any other questions you have for me or any particular board members? We have new board members, we have seasoned board members, any questions?
Sure, I mean, I guess, um.
Seasoned, experienced.
To the new board members, what brought you, or what was, what was your reason for wanting to participate? And maybe to the seasoned board members, what keeps you going?
I'll start, I'll start.
Okay.
I've been on the board for about a year and a half now, and I would say what brought me to the board is, is probably not that different than what most people have said tonight, just an incredible feeling of gratitude for what the district has given to their kids and wanting to be a part of that. I've also been a lifelong educator, and so just being involved in education at, at any level has just always been something that I have had an intrinsic desire to do. So I would say that's my main reason that I wanted to be on the board. I don't, did you have a second part to that question?
I think to people who've been on the board longer.
Oh, well, then that's not me.
Yeah.
That's Mary.
Seasoned, that's me.
Seasoned, I like that, yes.
You know, it has been a joy. I think many of us grow into this through PTO, so you and I would be coming around about this the same way. Yes, and every one of us gets to this table and says, wow, that is not what I expected. And yet, we love Dan's and everybody else's thought in this district of being lifelong learners, because we continue to learn, I think we all have that idea of giving back and serving and trying to create that opportunity for kids after our own kids, you know what I mean? And mark my words, I will miss this horribly, even in these horrible times. This is an amazing community of amazing people, and it's nice to share the wealth. So it's a delightful thing to do, and everybody that has been at the table with me, I was trying to count, it's a lot. I don't even know, it could be sixteen people, I don't know. I'd have to figure out how many amazing people I've been able to work with, and there's not a soul that I wouldn't be so proud to say, take care of my kids, and, you know, introduce them to bigger and better things, so.
That's great to hear. I think my only other question is, do we have a score check?
I'm sure, I'm sure Julie will be able to help you, I guess, for sure. Anything else?
No, I think that covers it, and if there's anything else you need from me, absolutely, feel free to let me know. And just wanted to say thank you for the work that you're doing. I mean, it's just about as important a work as it can be done, so appreciate all of your efforts on this.
Great, it was really good to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Can I steal this?
I'm a big, I'm a big fan of fast engagements, just do it.
Hello, thank you for inviting me.
Glad to get to know you tonight. So my name's Suzanne, and you're going to get to know all of us, but more importantly, we're going to get to know you this evening.
Okay.
So we are going to ask you a few questions, and then at the end, we will open it up for you to ask any questions you have of us. So with that, why don't we go ahead and get started? Why don't you start with your personal background and experience in the schools and the community? Tell us a little bit about yourself.
We've been in the district, oh, for over twenty years. Both my, both my children went through the district, Forest Hills, for all thirteen years of their schooling. So, and, and as they went through, my son went through, was in the special education program, both starting at Ada Elementary, one transitioning to Ada Vista, because she was in the first Spanish immersion cohort, so right after her kindergarten, she transitioned, transitioning to Ada Vista. But just involved in, in the schools, the popcorn sales that the special ed kids did then, students did then, coaching OM, so being involved with, you know, all through the K-12, when they went through that system, just really being an involved parent. when they went through that system, just really being an involved parent, both myself and my husband were involved with our kids and contributing that way. I'm also an educator. I've worked at Davenport, I've worked at Grand Valley, and more recently, right now, at the Grand Rapids Community College. So really trying to, just passionate about education and impacting students. So I see a lot of our district students coming through the doors of all those institutions and just really trying to help. Beyond Forest Hills, I'm on the board of Disability Advocates as well because working with individuals with special needs and integrating them into our community is something near and dear to my heart.
Wonderful. Well, it's really good to meet you tonight. Thank you.
And I have the next question. What would you say is the primary reason for your interest in serving on the Board of Education?
I think my primary reason is that I want every child to have access to the resources and the amazing education that both my children and the district. I also know that the reality is that not every child either has access or using those resources because I see them, right, at the community college or at Grand Valley. I see our top excelling students, but I also see our students who struggled and had access and had they used the resources, would be excelling. So one of my really passions is to help our young people live to the fullest of their potential. And I feel like now is a great time for me to do it. Like I said, when my kids were young, I focused on their education. And now, I just really want to give back. And that's, and, yeah. Give back and open doors for people that otherwise might not have had those opportunities.
Okay, great. And as a follow-up to that, if you were to be appointed to this vacant seat, do you intend to run in the November election for either the two or the six-year term?
Yes, if I was, yeah, if I had the, I would love to be considered for the distemporary position, and I would definitely run.
Okay, thank you.
I have to say, Solari, I forgot all about the Ada popcorn sales. Those were some fun days, and the hallways had quite a smell on them, did they not? Butter forever. I have the traditional question for you. What is the main strength you would bring to our board?
Can I identify two strengths that I think, my passion for education. I just am passionate about education and helping young people. That's reflected in my, all my involvement. But also, I think I am a consensus builder. I try to find common ground with people and try to bring people together. So I think those two are some of the two of my main strengths that I could contribute to the board.
All right, my question for you is, what do you believe is the major challenge facing our district? And then how would you address that challenge?
One challenge?
You could, you could.
I think one challenge right now that is not unique to Forest Hills, that is unique to education, be it K-12 or higher education, is the whole learning gap as a result of COVID, right? And how do we address that loss of learning that's happened? In terms of how I would address that, is finding creative ways outside of the school day to provide opportunities for young people to learn, for our students to learn. Be that online learning, be that service-based learning, working with our community to provide those opportunities for our students. Evening, you know, whatever that might be, trying to be creative because we do have to make up for that learning loss. So I think that is a challenge that we'll have for a few years at least because every student, whether they were in kindergarten or whether they were senior in high school, or college students, there is that learning gap. So I think that's a challenge. Related to that challenge is the mental health challenges that came around with that. So addressing those mental health issues in our young people, addressing that. Of course, the additional resources to address those mental health issues. But in addition to that, I think training our teachers, training our staff, training our parents, so that we can better be aware when we see our young people in trouble, when we see a crisis, so that we can, we know how to identify and get them to help. So providing that professional development to staff, to teachers, but also to parents.
Solari, what is your understanding of the role and purpose of a board member?
Okay, well, having been on board, I know one of the roles as a board member is to provide direction, overarching direction and guidance, and even feedback to be that CEO or in our case, the superintendent, right? So it's providing that overarching, and I say overarching because it is that overarching, not the day-to-day details, to the superintendent. But beyond that, for me, I see the role as being, what I would say, the pulse of our community to really figure out, I am the voice of that community. So figuring out what is it that the community wants from the district? And being that person that listens and comes back and delivers, and then working overwhelmingly to see if he can address that. So the pulse of the community is what I would like to call it, saying that's what I see as a role as well.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. All right, well, with that, I have a scenario for you. So you're at the grocery store, okay? Describe your response if a parent corners you at the grocery store with a problem or a concern that they're experiencing and they want you to take their side on that. How would you handle that?
I would listen, be very intentional in letting them know that I'm listening, but I wouldn't make a commitment, whether I agreed or whether I disagreed because I feel like this leadership team needs to have one voice when we are communicating with the outside. So I think what I would do is I would listen, I would assure them that I would bring it back to the team, and then have those discussions among ourselves, and then go back with saying, "Hey, this is how, this is what we think, you know, might be the solution." And that may be that we agree with the individual or not agree with the individual. But I don't, I wouldn't express my personal belief at that time until I brought it to everybody and kind of got a consensus. But definitely listen and bring that issue back to the logical.
All right, thank you.
If there were an issue on which you held a particular opinion or a perspective that was not shared by your fellow board members, how would you proceed?
I started out by saying that one of my strengths is that I try to find common ground and bring people together. So again, I think, I know I would listen. I know that I would create a safe place for you to tell me, to share, why you will address, why you want to address it one way and why, you know, and hopefully you would create that same safe space for me to express my views. So creating a safe space, listening. Then bringing us back to, bringing us back, and that includes myself with my different maybe opinion or view, to the mission and the vision of Forest Hills, right? And really just really bringing us back to that and saying, hey, you know, for me to reflect and saying, is what I'm saying reflected in the mission and vision? Or is what you're saying reflected? So bringing us back to that mission, those guiding principles that we adhere to. Sometimes when we, you know, no problem is unique, and no problem is unique to us. These are problems that have been seen by other people. So looking at best practices, looking at data to see if that can help us guide the path to go, whether that be yours or mine, you know, looking at data, looking at best practices to help that. And sometimes it's compromised. And I'm good with that because we, I think sometimes we need to do that. We don't, yeah.
Sorry. So it's been a while since the kids were around. So whether it's current day or looking back a few years, do you have a specific or personal interest in any aspect of Forest Hills' educational or extracurricular programs or activities you'd like to speak about?
The immersion programs that we have are near and dear to my heart. You know, and not just for the language skills, but because we are creating global learners and those skills are just, yeah, just so valuable in today's world, world. But, so, the immersion programs are definitely near and dear to my heart. The special education program, really helping our young people, regardless of, yeah, helping them contribute, getting them to a place where they can contribute to society, to our community. I have just the value in work and the pride that people get when they, after a hard day of work. It's just, you know, I saw how my son during COVID didn't get that opportunity and then was able to, you know, go back to work. And, you know, it doesn't, the fact that he is contributing gives him so much pride. So really, looking at that special education, our special education program and really seeing what we can do to enhance those programs so that our young people can contribute to society in their own special ways.
What is your vision for the district? And how do you think that we can better serve our students and families with that vision?
So overarching, I would say that, you know, my vision would be to do what we can to make sure that no student falls through the crack. But more specifically, because of my experiences, one of the things that I would love to see, a vision that is, what can we do to provide more career exposure to our young people? In the higher education settings I've been in, I have seen so many students come through our doors not sure what they want to do. It's very expensive to go to college still trying to figure it out. So I would really, and that brings the whole collaboration with our community as well, whether it's the business community or the legal community. What can we do, starting as early as eighth grade, to really provide a broad career exposure to our young people is something that I would really like to see happen as well.
That is me next. All right. The Michigan Association of School Boards offers professional learning for all board members. What are your thoughts regarding board professional learning? And would you be available to commit time for such valuable training?
So I'm a huge believer in lifelong learning. That's reflected in the fact that I have been going on for PhD now for multiple years, and they are getting ready to tell me that I need to move forward sooner than later. But I am, but I am a believer in lifelong learning. And, you know, just really attending as many professional development opportunities as I can, and it's time of love, so, and I do that in my work now because there's always things that we can learn, we need to learn because it's a changing world. And yeah, so the answer is that, yes, I would. And understand that it's because it's near education and how to improve education is near and dear to my heart. So it's not something that I would find tedious in any way. Not only am I a lifelong learner, believe in lifelong learning, but this is something that would fit right into my passion.
Yes, all right, thank you. Okay, well, now I'm turning it over to you. Is there anything else you would like to tell us on why you would like to serve as a board member?
Like I said, I just really want to provide the same experiences and opportunities that my children had in the district. But I also know that's not the reality for many in our, for some in our community. And I would really like, be it those, be it the individuals of students of color, be it students' families and students with special needs, I would really like to be able to work with those communities, you know, those communities to see what we could do to make it an amazing experience for all our young, all our students.
Okay, so now, any questions you have for us as a board or any individuals here? The new board members, the seasoned board members, any questions?
I would love to know from the seasoned board members, some of the, some of the, maybe, maybe the most rewarding experience of being on the board.
I never turn my microphone up either. You know, Solari, truly, I could come up with 100 things. I have cool stories about kids I've been able to work with, opportunities that have been presented to me by virtue of board service to give back to the community in other ways in our districts, whether it be Project Charlie or the Student Advisory Council or helping out with our college panel in the fall. Ways we don't have to keep reinventing the wheel. This parenting thing, nobody wrote a book on it. And to be around other people who've been there before you and be able to share that wealth and gain it from others has been delightful. You know, I truly think the biggest thing is we are in a wonderful community, and the world is challenging right now, but we have much more in heaven than we have apart. And I, this process has continued to evidence that. We had 27 people, and I'm telling you, I am struggling like there's no tomorrow because every single person that has come to this table has, because there was a spot at this table. And that's rewarding. That's the community we live in. And that makes me feel good about having sat here and about leaving it for the people that are going to come after me. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, and Christine mentioned right before I came in that you were living the board.
I did, yeah.
Wow.
I'm seasoned, Solari.
I was trying to come up with a descriptor, yes. Any other questions?
No, I think, I, yeah, I feel like I, you know, I did do some research and I, you know, been a member of the community, so I feel like I have a good grasp of what's going on. I know some of the challenges you guys have had to, we've faced, right? So I'm not going to ask that because I know those challenges.
All right, well, thank you so much for coming in.
Well, thank you for giving me an opportunity.
Wonderful to meet you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a nice day. That's about like, out of the desk person.
We'll go into a recess because we've got a bit of time. So we will go into recess now, yeah. Recession. No more recess. Okay. Well, good evening.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Suzanne. Glad to see you this evening. We are looking forward to getting to know you a little bit. We are going to ask you a few questions to get to know you, and then we will open it up for you to ask us some in return, okay?
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, thanks. Well, why don't we start out with you? Start with some of your personal background and how you're involved in the schools and communities so we can get to know you.
Sure. We moved into the district about, it's been about 16 years ago, and it was intentional. I grew up in Grand Rapids, went through the Grand Rapids Public School Systems, and was actually thankful for the experience I had there that led me to having a scholarship, going to Grand Valley, then ultimately to West Michigan to earn a Master's in Public Administration. I moved to, we moved to this district because of the Spanish immersion program. And at that time, there was a lottery to get into the program. We first, my oldest, my son was, who's now a senior, was slated to go to Ada Elementary. And thankfully, two weeks before the school session started, he was able to get into Ada Vista, into the Spanish immersion program. That was our goal, was to get into that program. And the experience for him and his sister, our daughter, was just incredible. So I've been impressed and thankful for the opportunities afforded to. So I've been impressed and thankful for the opportunities afforded to, to both my kids and, uh, just the academics, extracurricular activities, support that they received throughout their entire schoo-, well, it's only been, you know, high, you know, through their K-12 experience. But I've been, uh, impressed by the teaching staff, by the counseling staff, you know, administrative staff has all been very good. I've interacted with them, uh, you know, at conferences. But also my son had some learning challenges and, and had a five, five or four plan and, uh, uh, but the support has been incredible for him. And, and so I wanted to, in a way, pay it back, um, by, by being able to, to come and serve if, if I could. Um, my background is, uh, I, as I said, I grew up in, in Grand Rapids. But my parents were from Mexico. My mom had a second grade education. My father had none. And, uh, so it was quite a journey for, for me to get here. I was the first in my family to go to college and graduate. Uh, so it's been quite a, um, a journey. And, uh, the value that we place on education is high. And, uh, and I think that that's been also something that has been, um, internalized by our, our kids as well. So thankful for that. I have, um, worked in a variety of positions, primarily in the public sector. I worked for the city of, well, starting off with Outer County, I was a deputy there. Then, uh, worked for the city of Holland as a HR director. And then came to Grand Rapids and, um, it was, uh, working first for the Parks and Recreation Department, then became, uh, working in the city manager's office as the assistant to the city manager and worked both internally and externally doing organizational development work. Uh, ended up being the fiscal services director for the city. And, uh, and then left there and went to, uh, Spectrum Health and, uh, ran a portfolio of programs that provide community-based, uh, services for, for people who were not necessarily served by the hospital. So it was my, my charge to try to provide health services outside of the hospital setting. Uh, and I did consulting work after that, uh, and COVID hit and that kind of put a stop to that. And I'm currently the executive director of the Green Home Institute, which is a national organization that provides consultation for construction of sustainable homes. So for people to have healthy and energy efficient homes. So working with contractors and, and people, architects, designers and so forth to make sure that, uh, homes are healthy. And, uh, so we, we train people to become accredited in, in LEED and Green Star or another type of, uh, entities that will certify people to do construction and, uh, and making sure that they are sustainable.
Excellent. Quite a background. Healthy people, healthy kids, healthy homes. That's good.
Yes, exactly.
Fantastic. Wonderful. All right. Well, thank you. Um, we're looking forward to getting to know more about you tonight.
Sure.
Thanks.
Hi there.
All right.
Uh, what would you say is your primary reason for your interest in serving on the school board?
Um, my primary reason is that, um, again, it's to, to pay it back. As I said, my, my, um, opportunities that I've been afforded, uh, here in this country have been amazing. And my work in the public sector for decades has been really dedicated to do that, to make, making things better for people in the, in the local government and municipal government. And I've never really worked in education, so this is an opportunity to do something like this, lend her, hopefully, my, uh, my skills, my experience, my expertise and, and move some things forward here as well. And, uh, and I, I would like to provide perhaps a different perspective, uh, that aligns with, with at least what the mission and vision of the school district is, but provide maybe a different perspective. And when I came into the district, uh, it was with that intent and, um, and being able to shape things in a very diplomatic way, but yet bring about some, uh, understanding of the evolving demographics and the challenges that we face, the challenges with finances as well. I understand that, you know, working in the public sector, understand the challenge of always trying to balance budget with demands. Uh, so hopefully lending some of that expertise as well would be, would be something I would, I would like to do. And, and that's why I was seeking, seeking that opportunity as well.
Great. Um, and as a bit of a follow-up, if you were appointed to this vacancy, do, would you intend to run for, uh, in November for either the two or the six-year term?
I understand that it's a vacancy right now to fill the spot and the general election is in November. And if appointed, and you guys are nice to let me consider June then.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Jose, the traditional question. What strengths can you bring to our board?
Um, I, I think, um, being able to listen, uh, and hear what, what people are saying in different constituencies and understand that people get frustrated sometimes with school districts, whether the bosses are running or whether or not there's a mask mandate and so forth. And I, I know that there are people who have different perspectives and oftentimes they want to be heard. So the ability to listen to people, being able to forge solu- solutions and be, being able to mediate, uh, differences of opinion and come to some, uh, positive outcome is, I think, is a skill as well. The other is, although not something that I'm necessarily excited about, but I have a, a talent for, for money, for finance, financial management. Yeah. If you're an accountant, you'd know that this is not something you really want to do, but if you're good at it, you'd do it.
All right. I have a question for you. Um, what do you believe is the major challenge facing our district? And how would you work to resolve that?
Um, I think the major challenge for this district is, um, thankfully, we're in a good position in terms of resources and, and staff. I think the demands on, on the system district right now is the personnel issue, whether or not you can fill spots where there are currently teachers lacking. You know, my, my kids have struggled with, with, um, not having teachers in certain classes. I understand that there's a shortage of, of busing as well. My daughter is, uh, currently in the lacrosse team. I was just sitting out in the field with her and, and know there's no transportation available for, for them as well. So, you know, the staffing issues, um, and, and being able to, to have, um, the resources to, to, to dedicate to the things that are needed. Um, I'm not certain what the capacity is, for example, for, uh, counseling staff and student services, supportive services. Um, but I know that when, when we had to encounter that or, or ask for that service, it was very well delivered, but we had somebody come in who was, I think, a retired principal, provide that service as well for us. So, uh, very thankful for that, but I think that, that might be a challenge that I may have perceived and that should, may, may need to be addressed as well.
All right. Um, what is your understanding of the role and purpose of a member of the board?
Sure. I understand that the, the Board of Education, the members of the board are a policy-setting body. They're not in charge of day-to-day operations. So there's a bifurcation between the policy and the operations. And, and the board is to provide guidance and advice to the superintendent and, uh, so they can, uh, turn policy into operational management, uh, strategies. And that's up to the, to the superintendent and his staff.
Thank you.
Okay. So I've got a scenario for you. You are at the grocery store and somebody comes up to you and corners you at the grocery store with a problem, an issue that they're having in the school and they would like you to take their side on the issue. How would you approach that situation?
Um, when I've done that circumstance is I, I listen to them, uh, acknowledge what their complaint is or where their issue is. And, uh, if, if possible, I would direct them to the appropriate person to deal with it. It's not my role to, again, to get involved with the resolution. It, it is really, if it's, it's an operational issue, I would refer it or defer it to the superintendent or the appropriate staff member. I, I would certainly acknowledge their concern, their, their, their feeling about it, but beyond that, it's not really my, my role to resolve it then. And I certainly wouldn't want to intercede or interfere with what would be typically a staff function.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
If there were an issue on which you held an opinion or a perspective that was different from the other board members, how would you proceed?
Well, first of all, I have to acknowledge that the differences exist. Uh, then I would, uh, then if there were to be, if I held a strong position on that, I would express it. But doing it in a way that's diplomatic and not offensive and, and, and hopefully impart some understanding of my perspective so that we could have a, a constructive, um, dialogue that could lead to some sort of compromise or some, some reconciliation of differences of opinion. You know, that, that's ideal. And I understand that in a board, there's, there is elections or there are votes that are taken. So there's, there's sometimes you don't, you don't hold sway with your opinion. You can express it and if you don't prevail, that, you, you accept that and you move on.
Great. Thank you.
My turn, Jose. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Do you have a specific or personal interest in any of the district's extracurricular or educational programs through your own experience, through your kids, or any other way?
Um, I, I, I do. I, I, um, my children are both involved in the arts and, oh, athletics and the arts. But my strong passion is for the arts and, uh, making sure that, that kids are provided that opportunity. Uh, my, my kids went to Ada Vista and they're involved with the, the music program there and stayed through it. My son is a talented musician and I think that's where it, it started, was, it was inspired by, by the teacher there. And so I would love to be able to support that and making sure that they have the resources and the, and the kids also have that opportunity as well.
All right, Jose. My next question, what is your vision for the district? And how do you think that vision best serves our families?
Sure. Uh, my vision is, it aligns with your, your mission and vision is to make, to ensure that each student has the opportunities to achieve their, their potential. And that, that being academic and personal emotional growth. And, uh, and whatever I can do to ensure that the resources are provided to the staff, to the district as well, is, is really something that I would like to be able to assist with.
Here, but let's get to the next question anyway. Um, the Michigan Association of School Boards offers professional learning opportunities to all board members. Uh, what are your thoughts regarding board professional learning? And would you be available to commit your time to this, you know, valuable training?
I, I think it's essential. Uh, as a board member, you have a, um, significant, um, responsibility to, to guide. And you, you need to have a perspective that's balanced and also have the skill set to, to do that as well. Uh, so professional development is something that I continually do. You know, through education and continual learning, it's something that, that somebody in this role needs to take seriously and, and pursue that sort of training. If it's available, take advantage of it.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. I feel like we're flying through these. I know it's the first time for you, but yes, yeah. Um, so is there anything else you would like to share with us about why you would like to be a, a member of the board?
Sure. Uh, I want to go back to, um, my personal background and my experience with the school and my kids' experience with the school has been, um, just exceedingly positive. Um, and my service is really to support the, the experience that we've had to continue and enhance that experience as well. My background, of course, is, is, is Mexican. And being in the Spanish immersion program, that was really important for us. We, I'm a, I'm a native speaker and, uh, and so as a children's mother. And we, we maintain that to be very important. And I was, uh, uh, more than impressed that the district supported that as well, whether it's in the Spanish immersion program, the Chinese immersion program. It's not just the language, it's the culture. And I, and I greatly appreciated that. So it was my, my, it's my interest to be able to support not just the learning in the, in the immersion programs, but in overall what people choose as their interest, whether it's the arts, athletics, whatever passion you can tie to the children's learning, that would be what I'd like to support. And, and so that's why I really would like to service to see how is it we can, we can enhance experience for, for students? How is it we can support staff? How is it we can support the superintendent in, in assuring that that vision is realized?
Excellent. All right. So what questions do you have for us?
Well, I would like to know what sort of qualifications or characteristics you're looking for in a board member. Are you looking for somebody who is, who is homogeneous? Or are you looking for somebody that brings a different perspective? Uh, what is the talent of the board for something like that? And, uh, and, and what is the, the feel of the district itself? What is their, their appetite for some different perspectives as well? As our community, as our district evolves and, and changes, what is the, um, what is the foresight in terms of how do we manage that? How do we, how do, how do we move into a new era and of growth? Uh, and do it in a way that, that takes into consideration differing perspectives in a diplomatic way?
I'm gonna start that and then there, um, there's one thing I'm gonna have Mary. I know what Mary's gonna, I'm gonna have her add something to this in a second, um, from, from board composition some years back. Um, but I would say how we're looking at this position right now is, um, we actually put together, to, to get to tonight, we put together a, a rubric of things that we thought were important, um, for now and for future on the board, of things that we were looking at, because we were really happy to have 27 people say were willing to help out. And I'm sure there's 270 more that would, would help in some way. Um, but there were a few criteria that we looked at for consideration, um, to have conversations tonight. Um, not in any particular order, but the, the first of which was, when we read on paper before we met anybody, was, was the reason for serving, was there some compelling thing in there that seemed to align with the vision that we've got crafted for the district and where we want to go? And leveraging where we've been, but is, is there a compelling reason? Like we can tell this person wants to do this. Um, secondly was, um, is there evidence of service or involvement in the community in, in some way? That there's, uh, know what's happening in the hallways? Not that they're in their, um, in the lunchroom every day with the students, but is there, um, knowledge of what's happening in the schools and some evidence of involvement? Um, additionally to that, when you look at the, uh, composition of the board, we are going to be, we, we have a gap, a significant gap that we need to fill immediately, next week. And then we have another gap that we're going to have to fill, um, where we've had somebody who's been on the board for a long time. And, and overall, we know that there'll be a lot of new people on the board coming this, uh, November. And what we want to do is make sure that we could, uh, complement the skill set of the people that are here while also filling some of the gaps that we have. So we didn't have a checklist that they have to be X, Y, Z, but knowing our skill set and what we would like to have to complement some of the things that we bring to the board. And then the, um, fourth piece of it was we looked at board service. It, from two angles of this. One was, has the candidate had any evidence of board service in some way? Where they know how boards work, um, that it's, uh, we're not running the school, it's an oversight position. Um, so first of all, the knowledge of what board service is and experience of doing it, partly because it's gonna be more fun for the person if they come in and they know what they're getting into. Because if you think you're coming in and saying, I want to roll up my sleeves and help, which we all do, but there will be times that I'll roll up my sleeves and help, but then there are other times when it's a board role and it can be very frustrating for a new person if it's not quite what they thought they signed up for. So if there's evidence of that, not that people can't be trained, but if there's any evidence that they know what that is, it'll make the next few months a little easier for them. Um, but beyond that, then the training would be there. So those are the four, um, areas that we looked at. We all bring our different perspectives into that. So that's how we got to today. And I think it's still through that lens that we're, um, going to look at all the candidates that have been here. Um, and as far as a diverse perspective, that's something we've talked about all along of people who have young kids, old kids, there are different work experiences, all of this. And then Mary, maybe you can add on to something when you were earlier on in your board service, when you were talking about the composition. See, that's how well we know each other. She actually knows what I'm gonna ask her to talk about.
It took me a minute, but I do.
Yeah.
And I love that you said homogeneous or differentiated? Absolutely differentiated because we are a representative democracy. You all vote for people presumably to represent you and your kids' needs and your interests, but also to be able to see things through different lenses and understand the different opportunities we're trying to make available to our kids. So we had a state of the district luncheon, had to be seven or eight years ago. And the then-president stood up, and I have to look at what I wrote down, said, I have a question for you, audience. What do an accountant, a financial manager, a railter, a pharmacist, a lawyer, a doctor, and an engineer have in common? And I looked at the people at my table and I thought, I have no idea. And he said, that's our board. And that's a pretty representative group, not, you know, the BSs and the BAs. You know what I mean? People that, um, are from the math, science and the language arts, history, social studies regimen. So we want a differentiated board to make sure we really can use the lenses we need and have the experience sets that we need to put our kids in the best place to be successful and happy going forward.
Yeah. And I think that at the end of the day, it's who our community votes for in the end. Um, and we, we know from here what our skill sets are because we know us, but not, the voters don't necessarily all know us. So we know, um, areas that we're looking to, to fill and that we would, um, be hopeful that the community would say, oh, look at all the skill sets that we bring. Or I'm kind of the unicorn. I've got a lot of different things. So I'm not sure if everybody knows that I've got business and education and all of that, but that's our job to let people know. So that's what we're looking for. What other questions?
Uh, you mentioned something about, uh, identifying somebody that filled in the gaps. And what, what are those gaps?
Um, well, I would say current, well, one significant gap is that she's going to have a lot of history that's been with the board. Now, she's not going anywhere, but from a board capacity. Um, having the, the historical perspective and understanding how, um, the traditions of, that we've had on the board and in the district, that she comes with that, um, to the board. And so we'll be losing that piece of it from that relationship piece as well as, um, her personal skill set of navigating decision-making and consensus and all that. We want to make sure that we keep that going. Um, and then also, um, Nicole and Marty had the, have the financial and business background and legal background, you know, so there, there were some of those pers- professional things on top of the things they did within the district. So, you know, we're looking at, um, all the things that they've, um, had and trying to fill some of those in.
Well, and one more little thing, we do lean very heavily towards business and education right now. And I told my board, I was a little shocked by how many people in their letters of interest said, I can do this because I have a passion for education. We have some pretty incredibly talented educators in our community and it doesn't mean we can't have more at the table, but we have that covered. We want to make sure we can support them and let them know what goes on in the other parts of the world. So it would be nice to fill those skill sets. Um, we like to look for geographical area balance, which we're okay, but we could, you know, play with that a little bit more and just make sure that our decisions truly reflect all the people that are expecting us to be acting on their behalf.
Did you have something you want to add there?
I was just gonna add that sometimes as people think of a board, they may think of a corporate board where they are recruiting certain skill sets.
they may think of a corporate board where they are recruiting certain skill sets and the like. In the case of an elected board like this, it's who the community puts forward. And, you know, as I've sat here for 16 years, it's, what's been wonderful is there's been all sorts of people from the community with all of these different backgrounds. And what they've all held in common is doing what's best for children. So that's been a great commonality piece to see. But I think when voters maybe go to the voting booth, they may not always know. It's kind of like that State Court of Appeals judge. And you're trying to think, what do I know about this person? You know, you can see some longer ballots on some of those things.
Great. Well, I can share with you that I do have diverse, not necessarily in what you might consider the traditional sense, but diverse in life experience. Where the way I grew up, you know, with my parents not having a high degree of education, but placing a high value in it, has taught me the importance of it. Because I've seen what it can do, how it can really empower you. How having my children also understand that. And hopefully other students will be able to do that. And maybe even the parents would understand the importance of it. Because where, the path that I took certainly demonstrated that for me. And I understand that the importance of fulfilling that vision, not just for the district, but as well for each individual student.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Well, it was really wonderful to meet you this evening. And I think that is it for the night.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are going to go into a brief recess, Kyle. All right, we are out of recess. Okay, so I am going to, what I think we're going to do is we'll go one by one. We'll go around and we'll do similar to what we did before. But I'm not going to start on this side of the table, Maggie. Today, we're going to start over here. And I'm going to start with Mary. And we'll, we're going to approach this from your top candidate or two that you're thinking about, unless you say, oh, my gosh, this is what I want to do. But, you know, start out with your top candidates and then share some of your reasons why. I think that we all have, I guess, nine great candidates and lots of reasons for all. There's no reason that all, we can't have all nine of them come up here right now, right? So that's understood. So share some of your compelling reasons for why that person or persons are coming to the top. And we'll each go, we'll actually say the person and give the reasons. And we'll each do that. And then we'll navigate through this and have Val keep track of who we're saying as we go. Okay?
We'll do it a little backwards.
Okay.
I will tell you, this is the fourth time I've gone through this process. And we almost always find somebody somewhere that there's not a good mix. They don't understand board service or that it's not a day-to-day operation thing. They're more visionary. Or they are definitely going to partner with that person in the grocery store and they're going to help find, you know, solve the problem. Every single person wants to give back to the community and we value service. And they all value education and the excellence we've always had in the past. So I'm going to present a little bit of a challenge. We have a very young board, and so consider the possibility, the momentum. What can we do to set ourselves up for future success? So I'm just planting that seed as I talk through some of the people that, I will tell you, I would be totally content with every one of those people. And I truly mean that. Every single one of them brings something to the table that I think could be of value to us.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Uh huh.
And I guess I should turn this on. May I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, let's just leave those on.
Right, they're on from now on. When you say momentum, I'm just looking for how you would define that. Do you think then that it is important that that candidate, or that applicant is interested in running again in the fall?
Yes, that's primary. And then to what extent? Where are they in their career? What is the motivation that outwardly or perhaps reading between the lines is bringing them here? And will they be here for two years, 10 years, 12 years? So we have some of us that are seasoned and leaving. We have some of us that have high school kids. It would be kind of neat if we could at least consider the possibility to get that next generation in. So you continue to have people that might be around for six to 12 years and you don't find yourself with potentially a very short stack of experience at the table. So this is just one thing that has risen when I have to look at all the questions and truly cannot differentiate that much between one exceptional individual and another. So when I think of board composition, like I said, I think we are skewed towards education and business. And there's a couple of people with a skill set. Lily and Christopher are law and pharmaceuticals. I know we have some social work and we have some data systems, which was incredibly compelling. So I would definitely say Steve is somebody that caught my attention too. But the very differentiated skill sets of the legal and the pharmaceutical, I thought were interesting. So that would be Lily and CJ. And I will tell you too, that idea of trying to have people around the table that are mirroring our superintendent's vision, not only in skill set, but I thought it was pretty darn neat that two of our candidates, they did not, were not here today, but they found their careers through very non-traditional paths. And that was one of the ones I had, you know, thought maybe we could interview. So I love that the people coming to the table are offering that opportunity to keep our, you know, representation of our community present. As far as talking about being involved in activities, they all are. And I said, one of the reasons I think this is important, do you really understand the culture of the group that you're wishing to serve and the table that you are sitting at? And everybody just oozes with understanding the culture and valuing the culture and honoring the culture. So I don't think that's a real easy way we're going to be able to differentiate. As far as compelling reason, I will tell you, I loved that Jackie said what's best for kids, because that's something that we use all the time and that rose to the top. But I also love that CJ said guiding principles. Because the one thing that we can consistently say brings us together and makes us go forward should be those guiding principles. A huge group, thought for a long time in 2000, and cited those out. And they should be the things that govern us everywhere we go. So as far as board service, and I've mentioned, of course, we want somebody to come to the table running. But we make fun of the fact that almost every one of us, six months down the pike, has said, wow, that's not what I expected. And somehow we all learn. And that is why I said, let's make sure people understand we owe ourselves professional development. And let's make sure that the commitment to some professional training through M A S B would be something people wouldn't push away. Nobody did. So that's not a differentiating factor. I think this just came up a little bit. It is really cool that people offer to help. We don't need a lot of help in things like communications or S E L or D E I, because we have talented professionals in those fields. We need decision makers that can, with Dan's vision, working with those teams, figure out if it's going to take our community to the next step and move our needle. So just, it's easy to say that person has so much skill, but to what extent is that skill going to be in the terms of consulting? And is it going to fill voids or help complement our experience and skill set the way it needs? So no differentiating factor there. So if I was really going to pick probably my first choice, it would probably be Christopher Mashad. Because like he said, he has 17 years that he is willing to stick around with us and grow with the organization. And his history to me lends to the culture. He does understand from whence he came, and he's jumping right back in again in the next generation. I do like his experience set. But obviously I riddled up a bunch of other names in there too that you all heard. So does that satisfy your hopes for how I was supposed to answer that question?
Yeah, I think that was a, no, I think that was a great start for us to see, to process through. I think for me, a lot of the things you articulated were things that we probably all were observing as we went through. So, I mean, ultimately, we can have that kind of discussion. And that, from a note-taking perspective, it sounds like you're aligning on Christopher as being your top pick, but all of these other people have all those defining
Yes.
characteristics that, that, yeah, it's a great list of people. A great list, for sure. Any questions for Mary before we go to the next person?
Can you, who was your second one? You said Lily?
I, Jackie, Lily, Christopher, I have Michelle on there.
Well, she's going to name all nine here in this session.
I know, sorry. If you're asking me to put them in order, I'd have to think about that. So can we discuss first?
Let's just start with first.
Yep, so I would say as far as looking at the opportunity to set us up with the momentum to continue into the future and not continually rebuild, there's an individual that has the culture, a decent skill set, and the commitment to putting 17 years into the future of our district. So that's Mary's opinion.
We'll come back around.
Sure.
All right, so you're up, Kristen.
Well, and you know, I can't, it's hard to follow you, Mary, because you've done this numerous times. You have all of this experience, right? You're seasoned.
I heard.
And this is a very unique experience for me. I've only been on a couple hiring committees ever. So everything that you just stated there was so well put. And I had, you know, gone through and considered all of these, you know, copious notes, the whole bit, and thought about where I felt like gaps could be filled. And I was looking for authenticity and in particular, perspective to add to the board. That I thought was really very important. And so as you brought up, you would consider someone with momentum coming into the fall. So I can see that one who we don't know is a maybe or something would be less likely to be a choice for you. Because I did really like Jose Reyna as an option here. Steve, Petros, Nadim, Lily, and CJ were my top, my top five picks there. And I really was, for me, what's most important to me on a board is a range of perspectives. And I'm thinking again about what do we have, as you pointed out. We're all passionate about education, but we also have a lot of education backgrounds up here as well. And looking for someone who isn't in the education background. As much as I love it, oh, the bias is there, right? But to me, really looking for somebody that isn't already filling a spot that we have here. And one thing I want to say about CJ is I just absolutely in love with that passion and enthusiasm. At the same time, he reminds me a lot of myself. And that's not a bad thing, but what I'm saying is where do we have? Yeah, right. But where, in that case, for me, that'd be like, okay, we do have this kind of voice on here. And then I think of the perspectives that Jose shared and think, okay, I have some of that sort of background to my life in a different way as well. And so what do we bring that's new? As you mentioned Lily, I think of Lily more to a business side than law, because I think that looks like something that was, you know, in the past. But, I mean, information that could be brought to the table that we definitely have a lack of now. And I do like that CJ has that pharmaceutical background, which is something that's entirely different. What I really loved about Steve is how very different he seems to be from everybody who's currently on the board. And that was very appealing to me. That soft-spoken, logical approach, very much about information and data analysis, which is something that I feel like we don't have a whole lot of conversation of on the board. Not in, not, because that's not our wheelhouses for most of us. Yes, I give you that nod and that nod. But I do think that's something that would really add to the board, give some new perspectives, give us another angle to consider, all the various things that we look at. And knowing who we may, who we are and who we may be losing in the fall, I think it's very important to consider somebody with those skill sets that is interested in running in the fall as well. So that does, you know, that makes me wonder about Jose just a little bit. Although saying, to me, he's very high up on my list, even knowing that that's a maybe. Is that enough to say?
So I'm here, so, well, I took it a little bit like it was a humor thing. Like, oh, if we could put up with him, or vice versa, you know? So who are your, so give us, is that your one and your two? Your one and two are Jose? Is it Jose is your one? Or are you tied? I couldn't quite tell if it was a tie or you have one.
Well, I just wanted to throw out those five names to start, because I think we were saying that we were going to deliberate. So, I mean, yes, I, then, fine, Jose number one. Nadim number two. Steve, I'm sorry, I should probably use last name, right? Three. And then I've got Lily and CJ, just sort of both. I put them at a four slash five there.
Okay. Dr. Foss.
Okay. Yeah, this is such a hard thing to do. Every single person that came up here was great. Everybody had wonderful things to say. I don't think anybody stumbled and fell on their face and you went, oh, my, what, oh, that was. Everybody's fantastic. That means that I agree that I like the idea of trying to balance out the board. You know, we're talking about different educational backgrounds, different professional backgrounds, and I think that's all very important. Part of me wonders if perhaps there should be a little bit more testosterone on the board. Or, you know, like, so that kind of lends a little bit of weight to me. I'm like, you know, it might be nice to have a man's perspective on some of these things. And I think my top couple of people actually, irrespective of whether they were going to be men or women, turned out to be men. And I've got to say, I mean, they were all really good. My, I think the enthusiasm and the, I mean, when you're talking about having somebody that you want to have a perspective and add in some long-term growth, like Mary was looking at it in terms of like, okay, like CJ's got young kids, he could potentially be here for a while. I'm also looking at it as, he's been here since kindergarten. He has grown up and come through the system. And so, you know, you have people who are like, the system isn't what it used to be. Well, he's what it used to be. And look at how good he is and how much he could bring to it in the future. Just, yeah, his enthusiasm. You know, like Mary, you'd said something at some point about you want somebody that is going to bring joy to the board. Like, I just felt like I got that from him. I felt like he would just be an exuberant go-getter kind of person. So I would say CJ is, would be my top pick. Another one that I was really intrigued by though, and I was actually kind of surprised that I was intrigued by this, was Steve. I liked, at first I was a little like, I can't hear him, you know? But he's got a very nice, quiet, calm demeanor that I think is a nice compliment to some fairly boisterous people on the board. I am not one of them. But, you know, I, he has a lot of really good experience. I like that he asked questions about like, how are you measuring your progress? You know, like, how do you know you're moving forward? How do you know you're making, hitting your benchmarks? You know, which are the types of questions we ask. You know, we don't do the benchmarking, but we go, Dan, fill us in. And where are we? How are we getting along? So I liked that he brought that perspective of asking that question. How do you know how you're coming along? You know, and it might be nice to have somebody that kind of can help to keep us on track when you get a bunch of people together that are sort of big picture kind of people. You know, his, he's got a lot of education background. I almost wonder if it's a little too much education background. I wonder if he'll get pulled into the weeds of more operational kind of stuff? Like, because that's where his tendencies might be. But otherwise, I really liked him. So I would say that Christopher is probably my number one and Steve is number two. But there are plenty of other people here I would also be perfectly content with.
Fantastic. Okay, Maggie?
So I would say that CJ is at the top of my list too. One thing that was interesting when he was talking, and I sometimes would get this feeling when I would interview teachers, and I would feel like I want to be in that person's classroom. He made me feel excited about running for the board. I'm already on the board. But he gives you this feeling like, I want to do what he, like, that sounds, he's making this sound fantastic. And he has a lot of energy. And I do like that he has a lot of time left for potential board service. And I also think it's important, sometimes I do feel, and I think I can say this because I do have the youngest child on the board represented here as a first grader. I do think sometimes when you talk about school boards, lower elementary kids are just sometimes not on the radar as much as they are when you talk about high school. And even when we talk about 21st century learning in the district, we do that with a seventh through 12th grade focus. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. But there are a lot of other kids that go and sit in our desks every day, those K5, K6 kids. And I love that he has that perspective. And he will be a champion for those, for those kids as well. And again, not that anyone else here is not, but I do think sometimes, and you know, elementary school does lend itself just naturally to a lot of very engaging activities, things that might be different from those upper grades. But I like that he has, that he's coming at it with that perspective, that energy. And also just that hope, right? I mean, he's got young kids who love school. And that's what you talk about, that step in, that bounce in the kids. And I think that sometimes when you've dealt with your 13, 14, 15-year-old for a couple of years in a row, it's easy to forget about that bounce in a kid's step that does exist at that elementary level a lot of times. And so I really appreciated that about him as well. And so I really appreciated that about him as well. And then I think Steve is great, too. I think that, yes, he has an educational background, and we have that represented here, but it's a different kind of educational background than, I think, what's already sitting at this table. So I appreciated that about him. And then I thought Lilly was an incredibly clear and organized communicator, and I appreciated that about her. Also, I thought she had a very deep level of involvement in the district for many, many years. And also then would have that history with the district. So I would say those are my top three.
Okay. All right, thanks, everybody. I think we can go now.
No, wait, no.
I also, I also want to say, too, like, I think these interviews are a real testament to the success of the immersion programs in this district. I don't, I mean, did every single person mention immersion? Maybe one or two didn't?
Most did.
Yes.
They, yeah, they either were in it or were fans of it.
Yes, yes. That was a really interesting thread.
Well, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, did you have a follow-up question? Because otherwise, I did want to, like, sort of converse and add to something that Maggie was saying, specifically how I had said that, so CJ, absolutely love as well, in my top here. And what I was trying to do was counterbalance my own bias towards somebody that I think would be my friend. Like, this is a person, we have a lot in common, this, I could see that, the passion, the connection, the, all of that enthusiasm, that here I am trying to temper my own tendency to want to immediately put that on the board. So I just wanted to sort of raise that, because when I brought that up, I said, this is someone who reminds me of myself. I have to question, is my interest in putting CJ on the board because of that? And am I perhaps not looking closely enough at the other candidates and their offerings? So that is something I really want to consider in that, is, yes, I feel that, too. I love that. I think that's a real testament to the district, that history is there. I love that you pointed that out. So I want to share my thought process and why CJ wasn't one of my top two picks, because I do want to counter my own feelings on that one and make sure that I'm being fair.
Makes sense.
One of the things that I try, and I may not have made my notes exactly accurately here, but I, if I wrote this down correctly, Jackie said she already filed to run.
Yeah, and so did Michelle.
And then I think Michelle Schellenberg said that they filed to run.
Yeah, Jackie, I have a question. She said, I filed today, and then she said something like, I wouldn't file today.
Yeah.
Either way, I would think she has.
Okay.
Jackie and CJ are the only two that reached out to me. And Jackie expressed very sincere interest and said the opportunity just presented no faster than she expected.
Okay.
I'm inclined to think she would.
I will point out that Steve.
Should I repeat that? I simply pointed out that Jackie and CJ reached out to me and asked about board service, and Jackie had said she had interest prior to this position becoming available. So I'm inclined to think she would pursue it.
And on that note, I want to say that Steve Petros also reached out to me. We had a lengthy conversation about his interest in continuing, or seeking the board position even perhaps in the fall.
And I know that there was a difference between, would you be willing to? And then some, so I was saying, okay, it sounds like some of these people are going to continue to pursue one of the openings in the fall, and for all good reasons there. So people were coalescing around CJ or Christopher, agree with all of those things. I thought that Michelle, I feel like we've gotten to know her through a lot of the things this last year, that that's a wonderful addition to our team in whatever capacity, because she's been working with people in an interesting collaborative way throughout, and that will never go away, whether she's on the board or not, you know. I love that. And I felt comfortable with the, her understanding, the difference between volunteering in the school, you know, she has been super involved, but I think because she's been so involved with the board, so that was really interesting to me. So it looked like there are a couple people that, she's for sure running, which is a great thing. Other people said they were interested in running. And I will, not to repeat, but I will echo what everybody was saying about the candidates so far. I was very impressed with CJ and Jose. I would say the, everything you said about CJ is, I just thought, okay. And plus, I think he went to Northern, I thought, okay, I feel like this is my family sitting right here in front of me to a point, you know, that it was a success story and somebody that is an advocate for all things good in the past and an enthusiasm for all things great in the future. So for sure, I definitely think that would be great. And the one thing that he seemed more concerned about was not having the board experience. And I just felt like that enthusiasm and the willingness to go through the training, and he has an understanding of what board service is. So from that perspective, any reservation that he might have, I think that would be mitigated through mentoring.
I think he was able to express what it is to be on a board, like, he's obviously knows enough from his own, you know, reading up on it, talking to people, whatever it is that he's done. I was like, he had a very thorough answer.
Right. I think that the, there's been a lot of conversations that have been happening, I wouldn't, we can't even call them conversations, but a lot of talking that's been happening in the district. And I do think a lot of people that should be in some of those conversations maybe haven't been in all of the conversations. So hearing Jose and the presence he brings might invite people into a conversation that haven't felt like they were invited into a conversation before, by his demeanor, by his presence, by his story, by all of those things. He has board service in spades, like, he clearly, it's, it's like he wrote the policy book, not read the policy book. Like, he full well knows the nature of support. I also really like his perspective on the understanding of finances, particularly in a whole host of industries that he's been in, but he also understands public finances, you know, which would be a huge benefit, not because our superintendent doesn't understand them and Julie can't explain them to us and, you know, walk us through that, but understanding the world that we work in. And we're looking to do creative and innovative things, and we don't need to be the experts on how to run the school, but have that knowledge of how the whole system works, of government industries and entities and things like that. I really was impressed with Jose. So those would be my comments. So CJ and Jose, and very happy for the people that already said they are committed to running. So I'm going to go back to Mary, because she started us out. What other things have come to your mind here so far, from what you've heard?
I don't think much. I think that everybody that has been mentioned by this group would do a great job. Again, if I had to pick one thing, I look at a lot of our applicants are at the tail end of their kid's experience. And it's hard to tell if that means they're going to be around for six years or three, and it would be really nice if somebody had some longevity to guard. You know, if we added up the tenure of this board from three years ago versus now, it would be very shocking. And I'd love to see us get back to the point that there is a little bit of that carryover. Again, Jose would bring quite a bit to the table. I love his work in diversity. I love his work in all your healthies, healthy people, healthy kids, healthy housing.
All the healthies.
It was, again, there's not a soul here. I would not be thrilled to have sitting at the table with me. So I said, I'm taking advantage of the opportunity, I have so much talent come forward, to say, do we have an opportunity here to outfit our board for future success? So that's, in my opinion, that's why I still lean towards CJ, because of his youth and his longevity. But I assure you, everything you've said and everybody you've supported, I'm with you.
Okay.
I would just say, too, and I kind of mentioned this a little bit about the elementary aspect, I have found that many elementary parents, I want to say this the right way, they're not as aware of the school board and what the school board does and what it does for the district. And I think that's too bad. I think naturally, something that you want to push up against comes up later in your student's educational career sometimes, and then maybe then your first experience with the school board is not a positive one. And I think it would be really fantastic for younger families to feel the presence of their school board and what that means in their community.
And to know, know somebody who's on the school board, because, well, not in kindergarten, that, you know, that was a long, you know, it seems like, oh, that was a long time ago. But having someone that grows up in it and experiences it and has, I think that on top of being a super empathetic person in and of itself, but you've got the experience in this role throughout all the stages, so having someone that does that. And you're 100% right, because when I talk to my next-door kindergarten neighbors, she says, oh, no. Or, you know, when I was asking, oh, who, and they think, oh, I'm not ready to do that yet. But CJ definitely has an understanding of what the board service is, and maybe, maybe he feels confident with, you know, having grown up in the district, but good perspective. Anything else that you wanted to add to your thinking here?
No, I don't think so. I think, I think we all agree that all of these people were fantastic. And we're lucky that we have so many wonderful, qualified, happy-to-serve people in the community. It's really a blessing.
For sure. Are we coalescing around one now?
Well, I did just want to, you know, say my last little words on that, as you were talking about Jose. And I, I love the arguments for CJ, I do. And, but I also want to think of who's going to step in immediately and really contribute right from the very start. And I do see that CJ is somebody who is running in the fall and is going to be, I mean, if he were to get a seat on the board, going to be all of the things that you mentioned before. I don't actually think, I get this impression, maybe it's from something that I had heard before, but I don't think Jose is going to be running in the fall. And I mean, I know that he said maybe here, but I did get another impression that he was not.
He said if we're nice to him.
Yeah, he said if we're nice to him. If he gets a spot, then we're nice to him. And I think that was a very, you know, a good way to sort of dance around that one. So, I mean, if it is really important to people, that, or to the board as a whole, that the person that we choose for this seat is running again in the fall and has the opportunity to continue that board service, then CJ would be the pick for me, as if that is the board consensus. And otherwise, though, I do feel like Jose would add a lot, add a lot. Not that CJ wouldn't, but that, I mean, he could step right in, hit the ground running, and we could, we could count on that.
I would say those are my top two as well. Okay? That are top two? Okay. So now what do we do?
You determine. I mean, it sounds to me like the majority, if we go with just majority right now, majority is CJ. So I didn't know if, you know, any other considerations are coming up with that, but I mean, that's the majority.
Good?
I'm good with CJ.
Would you like me to go ahead and make a motion?
Would you like me to go ahead and make a motion? Would you like to continue discussion or make a motion?
Continue discussion, or would you like her to make a motion?
I don't know, it just feels really fast. It feels, well, not fast after noon, fast discussion.
I know, well, that's, if, would you like more discussion?
I don't know, I don't know.
Because we're going to talk to all these people and encourage them all to run.
I felt the same way about Tuesday, is I was like, wow, that went faster than I thought. And smoothly. And very smoothly.
Because these are all great.
But when I went home and was like, I feel good about it.
Yes.
And so that's sort of how I'm looking at it right now. I'm like, all right, if we're going to be, like, it seems like we all have, you know, we're good with CJ. Yeah, we haven't discussed it all that long, but if we're all going to go home and feel good about it.
Well, yeah, what I really liked about that, to be honest, is that we had no discussion whatsoever amongst us at any point here.
Right.
And yet, the same candidates rose to the top for us, and I think that really speaks out.
And that is why we were able to come to a decision fairly quickly. So let's see if we have a decision. I move that we offer the vacant position to Christopher Mashad. Mashad?
Second.
I would like, I can't second myself, could somebody please second my motion?
Dr. Fosson, second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'm excited. I'm excited to welcome a new member to the board.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I feel good about that.
Okay, do we need, and how do we vote? Roll call vote, please.
All right. Mrs. Vock?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon.
Yes.
Right, Mrs. Tryon.
Yes.
Dr. Fosson.
Yes.
Ms. Cavell, yes, and Mrs. Callahan.
Yes, Mrs. Callahan, yes.
Mrs. Callahan.
All right. Okay. All right, there we go. We did it. So we have now appointed CJ Mashad as the, I'm on right, yes, yes. Okay. And we will call him and let him know that, and then proceed with letting everybody else know the plans and finding great opportunities for the rest of our candidates and thanking them. I would like to turn it over to our superintendent for his report this evening.
Yes, so we will make sure that that offer comes through, but also that there's arrangement for the acceptance of oath, which is also a piece that has to happen under law on all of this. And assume if you don't hear anything different, that that's all moving forward on that, just from an operational standpoint, from that. I would just like to thank you all on this. I have many times in my career sat at a table where board members have discussed appointing a candidate. You all have done a wonderful job, but I would just say that the tremendous assets that are in our community that came forward with all the people who applied for this, it's a wonderful testament to our community and the service mindset that I've always seen here in our community. I would just also say that our guiding principles developed by our community 22-plus years ago continue to serve us well. And I heard candidates address those principles. You know, one of the pieces that I think, what I certainly sense from our community is that everyone's not in the same place on trust, and that's one of our guiding principles. And we had some candidates speak to that tonight, which I'm grateful for. And I think what I also heard is that it's through our other guiding principles of collaboration, of open communication with our community. What was nice about tonight was it felt like an exchange back and forth. And I think community members have been longing for that. I think community members don't understand our board meetings are business meetings of the board to get the board's business done, but we've got to find a way to get that community's business done, to bring that collaboration, bring that open communication, and build that spirit of trust and build to that bank account that's there. When we do that, our kids will thrive. I have seen enough instances in other districts as I talk to other superintendents. When a board starts to tear apart, boy, that cascades through the organization very quickly. And so I just commend all of you for putting the effort into this process. I commend all the applicants for the position and the candidates that were here tonight. And I just, I don't know, I feel there's an opening there for those pieces. And again, if we look to our guiding principles and say, where do we need to put some more work into those, I think that'll serve us well. So I just appreciate all that and appreciate everyone's time with this.
Wonderful, thank you. Is there any other board communication this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
I mentioned this to Suzanne at the finance committee meeting. We have a committee assignment now for CJ, and if he fills the vacancy, it would be curriculum committee. The seasoned person will tell you that we have traditionally tried to get new people on finance committee, because the dollars are a big deal, and we want them to understand that. And I guess this other seasoned person would be Nicole. So what do you think of me going back to curriculum, so there's one of us on each committee? So he's, you know, we have, we're dividing and conquering a little bit.
Because you're on finance right now?
Yep.
Okay.
I would absolutely agree with that. I think finance is a good place to start.
What happens, though, if he cannot make finance committee? They're in the morning.
Well, we might have to re-look at our schedule. That's what we do.
To get us through, yeah.
Okay. It's pretty flexible, so we're going to challenge him on that right away.
Okay.
Does that seem like appropriate to you guys? So he is working with somebody that's got some years on the board, and he gets to hear about our dollars first? Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. That was my board communication. Thanks.
Excellent, okay. All right, and then the only other thing, just because this is unrelated to this topic here, I know we want to stay on topic in all of our meetings, but Elizabeth, I talked to Elizabeth about the state of the district coming up, and she asked me if I was going to do a table. I don't know if you guys are, but some of these people might be wonderful people to invite if you are going to be, if you're doing your own table or whatnot, I don't know, I haven't had, I've been a little busy this week, so I didn't really process through that fully. But anyway, that was, I was putting these things together, so these might be some great guests to have lunch with, because that's a celebratory lunch. So just throwing that out there. Okay, anything else?
Okay, anything else?
Just one question.
Yeah.
I thought that was brilliant, oh.
One question that I thought you did brilliantly on Tuesday, and I'm not sure if it's super necessary tonight, but you made a comment of, please don't publicize this yet until we've had a chance to make the offer.
Right.
So like, try to keep this off Facebook kind of thing.
For a short time here, yes. I think that would be great. All right, and then the last thing is, thank you, Val. Make sure you type that in there. Thank you, Val, and Kyle and team. Yes, thank you, Val. Okay, with that, I think we need a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Do you have a second?
I second.
We are adjourned.